Welcome to a meeting of your Hillsborough County Board of County Commissioners. Representing District One, Sandra Merman. Representing District Two, Victor Christ. Representing District Three, Les Miller. Representing District Four, Stacy White. Representing Countywide District Five, Ken Hagan. Representing Countywide District Six, Pat Kemp. Representing Countywide District Seven, Al Higginbotham. The county administrator is Mike Merrill. The county attorney is Christine Beck. Time is set aside at the beginning of each meeting for citizens to speak on any issue, so we have time for everyone. Speakers are asked to limit their comments to three minutes. Today's meeting is brought to you with closed captioning by Hillsborough Television.
Good morning, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to our Board of County Commissioners meeting. It is Thursday, September 6th, and we're going to start with the invocation and the Pledge of Allegiance by our Chaplain Commissioner Stacy White.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. Attention, salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in this world with liberty and justice for Heavenly Father, we pray that you will guide this board, our staff, and our stakeholders as we make important decisions for this county this morning. Lord, we thank you for our leaders and various stakeholders that are here this morning to be recognized for various things and to advocate for various important issues. We're just so thankful that we live in a country where we're free to have folks involved and engaged in the political process. Lord, as always, I pray for members of our armed forces and our first responders. I pray that you will guide them, comfort them, and deliver them home safely each and every day, and I ask for all of these blessings in your holy name. Amen.
Thank you, Commissioner White, for that wonderful prayer. I do need to read a memo into the record. Please be advised I will be unable to attend the Board of County Commissioners meeting on September 6th, 2018 due to a scheduled meeting of the Hillsborough County Aviation Authority of which I am secretary. I must attend the Aviation Authority meeting to ensure a quorum is present to approve the airport's annual budget. Please read the reason for my absence into the record. And then our next order of business, we have two commendations today, and Commissioner White and myself will present them. We will start with the Dress for Success Commendation first, as we're still waiting for some participants, so you come down after that. Yeah, after I do the dress. And this is always a pleasure to do this commendation. It's just a fabulous group of women who are working so hard in our community to provide needed clothing for women who are getting back on their feet and going back to work. Dress for Success, huge, great program, and I know they still need clothing, so we'll invite them to come up here and they can share a little bit about what they do as I commend them for their program. And they're celebrating their 20th anniversary this year in Hillsborough County, the Organization of Volunteers. It's led by Katie McGill. And Katie, if you'd like to come up, has served over 25,000 women and the services they offer to help empower those women. I'd like to present this commendation to Ms. McGill, and then she would like to tell you a little bit about the ways Dress for Success can help women become employed and successful. It says, "The Hillsborough County Board of County Commissioners is pleased to recognize Dress for Success Tampa Bay and its dedicated volunteers for empowering women to reach their full potential. As a former single mother of two girls, Dress for Success Tampa Bay founder Pat Ellington knows all too well the challenges women face in establishing financial stability. After creating an alliance with Dress for Success New York founder Nancy Lublin, Ms. Ellington established a resource for women seeking that initial opportunity to join the professional world. Courtesy of a volunteer staff with diverse professional expertise, the organization provides clients with business attire and accessories to help them secure employment. In addition, Dress for Success Tampa Bay offers programs that give clients knowledge and confidence to pursue success. Initiatives such as the Moving Forward Program, the Professional Women's Group, and the Community Action Program provide working women the opportunity to obtain leadership skills and create change in their communities. The organization, whose volunteers put in more than 6,000 hours, served over 2,000 women and achieved an 85% employment rate of graduates in 2017. The Board of County Commissioners of Hillsborough County, Florida does hereby commend Dress for Success Tampa Bay for its compassionate service in volunteering its time, energy, and talents to help women reach economic sustainability and a promising professional future for the last 20 years." And of course, it's signed by all seven county commissioners, so I'll present that. Thank you. I might say a few words.
Thank you so much. We would not be able to provide the services if we didn't have the support of the community. Yes, we have served over 25,000 women in the 20 years, but not only giving them business attire, we give them hope. And when we give them hope, when they walk in our door, they give their family hope, and that's what changed our community. And we could not do that if we didn't have the support of the community. So I'm thankful that our board is here with us and one of our volunteers. But Judy is now going to come up and talk to you about our 20th anniversary. We are celebrating 20 years that we are so thankful for, but thank you so much for the support that you give Dress for Success in the community.
Good morning, everyone. I'm Judy Bensinger. Thank you so much for being here today to help us mark this major milestone in our organization's history, 20 years, 20 years. And you know, interestingly enough, since we first opened our doors back in 1988, the demand for our services is not less, it's even greater. So going forward, as men and women and citizens and commissioners, we must make the needs of women in our community a priority. Our research at Dress for Success shows that most of our clients are single moms, and that means when we lift up women in our community, we ultimately lift up children and families in our community. Now, since I'm so shy, it was hard for me to do it, but I've already passed out flyers about our 20th anniversary. We're going to have a beautiful celebration on Wednesday, October 10th, beginning at 11:30 over at that beautiful new property in the Tampa area, Armature Works. So I'd love for all of you to come. Please call our office for more information, or you can go to our website. Our website address is TampaBay@DressForSuccess.org. And remember, over the next 20 years, for every woman who knocks on the door of Dress for Success, all of us must answer. Thank you.
Now, our next three commendations, these are exciting. I'm going to ask Commissioner White to come down and join me down here to recognize two of our great legislators that have done so much to help us here in Hillsborough County. Just can't, you know, we all have to work together, and I think that's the message. State and local have to work together to get the job done. So our first, we're going to recognize three individuals. Our first one, of course, is Senator Bill Galvano. And I wanted our listening audience throughout Hillsborough County, because this is televised today, to really hear the good work that you all did for us. And I think that's why I want you to come here and really, you know, give this presentation to you. During the last legislative session, Senator Galvano was a constant advocate for Hillsborough County, and we're so appreciative for him and for all of our priorities. He championed a $5 million budget priority for a priority that's in his district, but it's also in mine, and it's in Hillsborough County. It was earmarked for one of our greatest transportation needs we have in our budget right now, and that is Big Bend Road. It is our number-one project. And the money allows the county to bring congestion relief to one of the fastest-growing areas in our county, which is South County, Waterset, that whole area, Ruskin, Apollo Beach, Sun City. It's just, it's growing so fast. You have to come to one of our land use meetings to appreciate the fast-growing developments. The money is going to really help us leverage the federal dollars to help assist with the Big Bend Road I-75 project, because as you know, to do an interchange, to do a road costs a lot of money, millions and millions of dollars. So that's why we can't do it alone, and we're using your tax dollars out there, the listening audience's tax dollars. We're putting it to good use to really help provide transportation and congestion relief in South County. So I'm going to ask Senator Galvano to come forward, and I'll read this commendation to him. It says, "The Hillsborough County Board of County Commissioners is pleased to recognize State Senator Bill Galvano for his guidance and advocacy in helping Hillsborough County earn a multimillion-dollar budget award from the Florida Legislature. A native of New York, Senator Galvano's love for Florida began when his family moved to the Sunshine State in 1969. After graduating from the University of Miami School of Law, working in private practice, he decided to serve his community by running for the Florida House of Representatives. First elected in 2002, his fiscal insight and ability to work across the aisle led him to be reelected three times. He was now elected to the Florida Senate in 2012. Senator Galvano's dedication to local causes helped Hillsborough County earn $5 million in state funds during the 2018 legislative session. And thanks to his contributions, the award will help fund the Big Bend Road Interstate 75 project, which will ease congestion and bring relief to commuters. The Board of County Commissioners of Hillsborough County, Florida does hereby commend Senator Bill Galvano for his vital support. Thanks him for helping the county enhance services to residents." And I just want to say, I served with Bill in the legislature. It was, he has such a compassionate heart, and I got to know him as a friend, but I think he is someone that I knew would rise to the top in this next legislative session. He will be Senate President, of which we should all be proud, that we have somebody from Hillsborough County that's in leadership. So we really do want to thank you.
Wow, thank you.
And do you want to say a few words?
Sure, sure. First of all, thank you very much. This is quite an honor, and I really appreciate the recognition. But the truth is, I'm just part of a big team. I'm a small part of a big team. I'm a big team, bigger team with the legislature as a whole. I see we have from the House, and of course Senator Young, who is here, has worked very close with us. You have a great delegation. We have a great Bay Area delegation, but what you all need to know is that it's really the leadership from your commission that carries the message to Tallahassee. You know, we partner with them. We hear what's important to you, because they're here on the front lines, and they're carrying your dreams, your goals, your desires to Tallahassee. And so I'm just responding to the call of the wonderful people around me here at this dais, and it's a great honor, and I love representing Hillsborough County. Thank you so much.
Thank you. If you'll just stay up here, we're going to do some more, and then we'll take some pictures. And don't want you to think you're completely off the hook. We'll have another list coming this year.
I thought we were done.
No, unfortunately, you know, there's always, we're just growing so fast. So I'll turn it over to Commissioner White.
Thank you so much, Chair Merman. And next, we're going to recognize Senator Dana Young. During the 2018 state legislative, come on up Senator Young, welcome. During the 2018 state legislative session, the Senator assisted Hillsborough County in achieving many of its budgetary priorities. In fact, she sponsored five out of our seven appropriation requests. She championed state funding for several of our budget requests. Just a sampling of that would be the regional special needs emergency shelter at $885,000, the Hillsborough County South Coast Trail Enhancement Project at $450,000, and school sidewalks and safety enhancements totaling $2 million. That was ultimately vetoed by the governor, but we appreciate you championing that nevertheless. In addition to her efforts on these budget items, Senator Young and her staff always had an open door with our team and showed a willingness to discuss important policy measures. So with that being said, Senator Young, I'd like to read this commendation here into the record for our audience. "The Hillsborough County Board of County Commissioners is pleased to recognize State Senator Dana Young for her support of Hillsborough County during the 2018 state legislative session. For Senator Young, politics is a passion that has developed through generations. Her grandfather, W. Randolph Hodges, was a member of the Florida State Senate, including serving as Senate President from 1961 to 1963. Gene Hodges, her uncle, was a state representative, and her father, Don Dudin, I hope I pronounced that right, was Assistant Secretary of the Florida Department of Environmental Protection. Senator Young began her public service in the Florida House of Representatives, where she served for three terms and was then elected to the State Senate in 2016. Her professionalism is matched by her dedication to Hillsborough County. During the 2018 state legislative session, she sponsored numerous county budgetary endeavors, such as the Hillsborough County South Coast Trail Enhancement Project. Courtesy of Senator Young's expertise, Hillsborough County earned over $1.3 million in state funding. The Board of County Commissioners of Hillsborough County, Florida does hereby commend Senator Dana Young for her leadership and her service to Hillsborough County." Senator Young stated today, and of course, signed by all seven of the commissioners, and I know you'd like to say a few words.
I would love to.
All right.
Never get a politician up here that doesn't want to say a few words. But thank you so much, Commissioner and Chair Merman. It is, as Senator Galvano said, it is truly our pleasure to be a partner with the county and the city of Tampa, in my case. We have to work with the county to make sure we know the priorities, because one of the most important jobs that we have is to make sure that we are supporting our infrastructure and local government needs here. The special needs shelter is particularly important to me because we are in hurricane season, and we need to know that the most vulnerable among us are well-protected. And we have some ideas next year that you don't know about that may be a special needs shelter for the animals of people that need to be in shelters in coordination with the humane society. So that's something we'll be working on. But today, I just thank you so much, and thank you for being such wonderful partners. Thank you.
And last, but certainly not least, I'd like to invite my friend Representative Sean Harrison to the podium. During the 2018 state legislative session, Representative Harrison was a constant supporter of Hillsborough County. As a former city councilman, he understands the important role local governments have in the lives of citizens. The representative consistently voted against preemption policies that hurt local governments' ability to make decisions best for them. And Representative, I appreciate you supporting government closest to the people. He championed funding for the regional special needs shelter hardening, public safety station at the New Tampa Cultural Arts Center totaling $885,000. And Representative Harrison and his staff always had an open door to our team and listened to our concerns and opinions on important policy initiatives. So without further ado, Representative, I'd like to read your commendation into the record. "The Hillsborough County Board of County Commissioners is pleased to recognize State Representative Sean Harrison for his expertise in securing funding for Hillsborough County during the 2018 state legislative session. Throughout his career, Representative Harrison has been dedicated to public service. He was New Tampa's first representative on the Tampa City Council, and he continued his service in the Florida House of Representatives. During his tenure, Representative Harrison has shown dedication and enthusiasm for his committee assignments, including serving as Vice Chair of the Judiciary and Rules and Policy Committees. As a public servant, he is a trustee at Zoo Tampa at Lowry Park and was named 2012 Legislator of the Year by the Florida Fraternal Order of Police. Representative Harrison knows well the vital role local governments play when it comes to serving the community. During the 2018 state legislative session, he helped Hillsborough County fund the regional special needs shelter at the New Tampa Cultural Arts Center. Courtesy of Representative Harrison and his staff's expert guidance, the county earned $885,000 for this project. The Board of County Commissioners of Hillsborough County, Florida does hereby commend Representative Sean Harrison for his support during the 2018 legislative session, and thanks him for his service, representatives dated today, and of course, signed by all seven of the commissioners. Congratulations."
Thank you, Commissioner, and I appreciate the opportunity to come back into this room where I spent many a morning when I was on the MPO and serving in other capacities over here. It's good to come home. It's also good to remember where we came from. Whenever we, in our political careers, have the opportunity to take the next step, we always need to remember where we came from. And I came from local government, and I will always cherish those eight years that I spent on the Tampa City Council. And it's been a wonderful opportunity for us to grow the New Tampa and Northern Hillsborough County area up in Tallahassee. And this specific budget request, I was happy to help assist with, because I got a chance to see during Irma, the need that we have in the special needs community for specific shelters for that community. We had an opportunity to work up at the Sun Dome where the special needs shelter was housed, and it just wasn't a fitting setting for that. So we're going to have that special needs shelter over in the New Tampa area. It's going to coexist with some other neat opportunities for the cultural arts that we're trying to bring to New Tampa, and so it's something that's been a lifelong dream for a lot of us out there in that community. I look forward to continuing it and actually wrapping that up in the next session. So I appreciate, Madam Chairman, the opportunity to be your partner in Tallahassee. It's good to come home, and we're going to keep working for you. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, thank you, everyone, and thank you again to our legislators that came today. Certainly, they're making a huge impact with us here in Hillsborough County. So next, we will, Mr. Merrill, review the changes to the agenda.
Yes, Commissioner, there's only one change. That's an off-the-agenda item F4 by Commissioner Hagan to discuss the Bad Boy Moore's Gasparilla Bowl. We have a couple of time certans, beginning with one public hearing at 10:00 a.m. That's to adopt a resolution which establishes a stormwater management non-advalorm assessment rates and the non-advalorm assessment roll for calendar year 2018. At 10:15, we have item F2, which is Commissioner Merman's item. That's a resolution supporting a road designation in the county recognizing Arthur Pep Pepin. At 10:30 is item F3. That's also Commissioner Merman's item. It's directing the county attorney to draft an ordinance for the board's consideration to impose a moratorium upon the acceptance or processing of applications that seek to amend the future of Hillsborough Comprehensive Plan to establish future land use designations other than natural preservation for a period of 180 days. At 10:45 is item B5. That's a county audit report on library books and materials. Final time certain 11:00 a.m., which is the item Commissioner Hagan's bringing on the Gasparilla Bowl. Those are the changes.
Okay, we have motion by Commissioner White, seconded by someone, Commissioner Hagan, to approve the changes to the agenda. Please record your vote.
Motion carried, five to zero.
Okay, we're now going to go to the public comment portion of the meeting. I do want to say before we make my statement that Mr. Christ is not here today. He is the Vice Chair, and Stacy White, as chaplain, will come and be essentially the Vice Chair for this meeting when I introduce my items or something like that. So just wanted to let you all know. So the board welcomes comments from citizens about any issue or concern. Your opinions are valued in terms of providing input to the board members. However, it is requested, at the same time when you address the board, that comments are not directed personally against a commissioner or staff member, but rather directed at the issues. This provides mutual respect between the board members and the public. The board has set aside a 45-minute period in the morning immediately following changes to the agenda for public comments. At the discretion of the chair, the board may again hear public comments at the end of the meeting. People wishing to speak before the board during the public comment portion of the meeting should complete the electronic request for public comment form located in the lobby just outside the boardroom. Citizens speaking on scheduled agenda items will be heard before citizens speaking on non-scheduled agenda items. When addressing the board, please state your names, speak clearly in the microphone, and three minutes will be allowed for each speaker. So to start, the on-agenda speakers, the first speaker is Amanda Stevens. Next speaker after her is Davis Byrd, and then Michael Moore.
Good morning. Good morning. Chair Merman, would it be acceptable to allow Debbie to speak before me, and then I can go second?
Sure.
She is on the list.
Okay, she, this is Debbie Voiles?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, we'll just switch.
Thank you so much.
Mm-hmm. So Debbie Voiles. And if you give those to the clerk, they'll pass them out for you? No, over here, the same person. There you go.
First one of the group. Bring up the pictures. Hello. Thank you for letting us come here and present our views. My name is Debbie Voiles. I'm actually a Tampa native. Even my parents were Tampa natives, so I've been around here watching what happens in this community my whole life. Today, I'm here to ask you, above all else, to think about to deny the whole idea of realigning the Upper Tampa Bay Trail. As bad ideas go, that might be the worst I've ever heard of. I represent the runners in this community. You will see, this is my Run Tampa group, a group that you'll see, it's on the front of your packet. I founded this group about 10 years ago. I founded this group about 10 years ago. This group has 360 paid members. These people, this picture was taken at the trail this last Saturday morning. And I want you to know, those people drove into the trail and do so all the time regularly from Valrico, Hudson, Newport Ritchie. I have people in that picture from Wesley Chapel and from St. Pete Beach. And the reason they do that is because we have very few decent places to train in the Bay Area. I want to talk about safety. The first thing is shade. That's part of safety. Go around by the schools. A lot of money is spent to build covered areas by the schools. Do you realize we have no covered place with shade to train? It used to be, we would go out, Flatwoods is a really nice park. We used to be able to run in there when, I marathon train. I did a marathon three weeks ago. We have to, we start it very early in the morning, but they won't let us come into Flatwoods and train anymore. There's no shade at Flatwoods. So, if you don't start early, you have no shade. Look at Al Lopez, no shade there on the trail. Look at that beautiful Courtney Campbell Causeway, no shade and no water. There's a reason why people are driving over a mile to get to the Upper Tampa Bay Trail. When I'm out there, after growing up here with very few parks and very few opportunities, when I'm out there on that specific section of trail, you know what I'm thinking? Hillsborough County is finally getting it. They're thinking about fitness. And when I'm out there, I feel great. It makes me so happy, I'm pinching myself. I wonder how many of you have ever been on that? It's literally a quarter mile of trail where we're talking about. How many of you have ever even walked it? It's amazing. Look at, there's a magical canopy of trees there. Oh, I think one of these is missing. Well, you all have a picture with the canopy of trees. It covers the entire street, the entire trail. And what's magical is, you're only a block from the major highway, but yet you're going down that and all you see is this beautiful canopy of trees.
Thank you. Then Amanda Stevens. Okay, then Davis Byrd and Michael Moore.
Thank you so much for allowing us to speak today. And just as a reference, we are speaking about item B3 on your agenda. It is very unclear to a lot of people exactly what B3 says. I'm a business executive in the area and have been asked several times what it means. Frankly, I'm not sure. But what we do know today is that we are speaking about the realignment of the Upper Tampa Bay Trail. And although it's just a short section, I have great concerns about the safety of that section. And we've seen a couple of different renditions of how close the trail will become to Gun Highway, and it's still not clear to us how close it will be. And so, my concern is, in 2011, as I was watching, and I have to stick to my script because I do get emotional, as I was watching my 10-year-old play softball at Ed Raddus, she's watching, she goes to UT, she's watching this today. I sat with my four, six, and eight-year-old in a minivan come careering through the outfield of Ed Raddus Park Field. We watched in horror as this car, this minivan, was going toward groups of family and children. And luckily, it went through and beyond the softball field that my child was playing at. However, it continued on to one, another field. Luckily, you know, all I remember is the screaming of parents. And to this day, I still have visions of, in my mind, of kids being thrown out of the way of this minivan. By the grace of God, nobody was killed that day. In my mind, I was thinking at least 30 people could have been killed. Now, if you go out to Ed Raddus today, what you will find is, they've put up bollards around that entire complex just because of that incident. And although I've tried to forget the memories of that day, I think it's so important. As you look at this trail alignment, the trail runs parallel to Gun Highway. Gun Highway makes a right-hand turn at the very section that we're looking at realigning that trail right next to Gun Highway. What happens is, it's at the very point of the curvature of when you turn south on Gun Highway. My greatest fear is that any distracted driver, medical event, et cetera, somebody is going to plow right through that, and if there is not enough of a barrier between Gun Highway and the trail, today there is, it's plenty, it's a huge cushion. I'm not sure why we would change it. But my concern is, is that if we move forward with this, there has to be a significant barrier.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Davis Byrd, then Michael Moore, and Dan Malloy. Davis?
Hello, I'm Michael Moore.
No, next speaker was Davis Byrd. Davis Byrd. No? Okay, thank you. You're next. Michael Moore.
Okay, I'm sorry about that. I'm Michael Moore. I'm a member of Run Tampa, and I'm also a real estate broker and a certified appraiser. And in my early career, I worked for a real estate developer. And my job was to make sure that our projects were configured in such a way that would generate the most dollars for that property. That is what is happening here. They are asking you to move what is a park so they can have a development that will return the most dollars to them. I'm surprised that this project even got to this stage. I'm not sure why it wasn't rejected out of hand. The configuration they've used is a proposal. And as a former developer, you submit a proposal hoping that it gets accepted, but you know that it probably won't. You're finding out your parameters. I see no reason why this developer can't build his apartments without moving the trail. He can still use, he won't make as much money, but that's not the county's job, to help developers make the most money. The park truly is a treasure, as the other two people have said. There are people who drive not just from Hillsborough County. We have members in just in our running group who come from Pasco County, who come from Citrus County, come from Hernando County, because it's a wonderful place, it's a wonderful place to run. I don't see any benefits to the community for this proposed development. The, I don't understand why they would purchase the property, knowing the zoning, knowing the master plan, unless they thought they could get the commissioners to change the zoning to do what they want to. And they're doing this at the expense of a park. It's not, it's not like they're building it on Dale Mabry. The, every developer wants to attach themselves to a park, to a lake, to the ocean, because that's how they market their properties. But in this case, they're doing it at the public expense.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Dan Malloy, then Chris Day.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Commissioners. My name is Dan Malloy, 325 South Boulevard. I do represent Alliance Residential, which is the, well, I asked that this item be brought forward this morning, and I have to admit, I'm really impressed at the community interest. This is outstanding. What I would like to do for just a moment is talk about the starting point where this comes from. And that is a rather unique community plan for Citrus Park Village. This all came about 15 years ago, and the existing zoning entitlements for this property are essentially urban. It is called, in the Citrus Park Village Plan category, it's called the downtown of Citrus Park Village. Essentially, much of the comment that you've heard, and I suspect we'll hear, whether this is a pastoral area or to be an urban area, it's to be urban. The entitlements on the west side of the trail provide for only commercial development. That's the only development that is permitted on the west side of the trail. Basically, it calls for two-story buildings, and the minimum setback from the trail corridor is five feet. In addition to that, all of those buildings will have direct access to the trail, and the area between the buildings and the trail corridor under the existing zoning is required to be paved so that it can be walked. On the east side of the trail corridor, the same precise conditions exist, but you have the additional potential uses of multifamily and of office uses on that side. Again, each building will have access to the trail for pedestrian and bicycle use, and the portions of the, outside the trail property between the building and the trail corridor are required to be paved to provide for walking access. This is intended to be a sort of a downtown main street area. With that, there obviously is now a zoning pending that provides things that we're not supposed to talk about today. But basically, with a rezoning pending, it does give the opportunity to address the plan for Citrus Park Village and to make it better. And that's what we ask for your consideration for today. Today is not a decision on whether this happens or not, it's just a decision whether it's on the table in the zoning proceeding. Thank you all.
Okay, I just consulted with the county attorney because I wanted to clarify, if there was a pending zoning, we would not be able to listen to the public comments on this issue. But she has, could you just state where we are in the process?
Yeah, it's my understanding, and I'll ask Susan or Joanna to correct me if I'm wrong, but the zoning application has not yet been filed. This is seeking the authorization to do that. So, it's not yet pending, so ex parte communications would not yet be triggered.
Okay.
Is that, it's not, it is filed? Oh, it is filed, okay.
The zoning's filed, we can't listen to public comment.
You can, you can listen to comment about the trail, but not the rezoning issue would be.
Okay, so, so I just will ask everyone to limit your comments to the trail, the benefits or whatever of the trail, and not talk about the rezoning. Okay? Thank you.
Understood, thank you.
Chris Day.
Excuse me.
Good morning. Commissioner Kim?
Sorry, I didn't hear my.
You're recognized.
I just wanted to ask Christine, because part of the record, part of the record that we have in our agenda packet is a alignment for a proposal of how this sale of our property or swap of our property goes. So, as far as, and not to, it's fine to have people talk about the trail, but we just had part of the zoning issue talked about by one of the parties involved. And, and that is in the packet. So, as long as that's in the packet, available to the public, in our board packet, it seems to me that that's fair game in terms of speaking to it.
Well, no, that's, if we could get Adam Gormley to, if we could just huddle up here, Adam and Josh Bellotti and Christine Beck, Joanna Lundgren, and please, give us direction on this before we go further. And, yeah, explain the ex parte communication so the public understands that. All of the remaining speakers deal with B3, so I am going to take the first speaker on off-the-agenda items, and then we'll come back as they tell us what we can do and what we can't do. So, Brian Rodriguez for off-the-agenda, and I understand you wanted someone to speak first before you. Is that correct?
That's not correct.
Good morning.
We went back to it.
Pardon me? Okay.
We went back to the original plan.
Okay, you're recognized.
My name's Brian Rodriguez, 611 Timber Pond Drive, Brandon, Florida. We're here to talk about our flooding issues. We were here two years ago, and I don't want to speak about Victor Crisp when he's not here, but he helped us. And we had a staff meeting. We met with some directors and engineers, and they promised to put some plans into effect to help us with flooding. Last year, rainy season wasn't so bad, we didn't have any occurrences. This year, we had a serious raining season, and so we have a lot of flooding. But nothing has been done to help us in those two years. We've been fighting this flooding for seven years. What happened in, the storm soared from a Larson Pond on Sefner Valrico Road and Clay Street, they diverted water to us. And ever since then, we have flooding. Every time we have serious rain event, we have flooding. And so, that's what we're here, we're here to try to get the commission to get on board with us and not just have a bunch of meetings with staff and, and put long-range plans into effect, but something that can help us to stop our flooding. And I really feel that, and we go through a lot of people that try to help us, but it's a long process, putting something on the budget, bidding it out. People sue, sue the county and they win, project stops. We have the Lake June project, it was found and stopped. But anyway, the long and short of it is, we need someone to meet with us and solve our flooding problems. I mean, it sounds just like a street flood, it's not a big deal, but guy that I contracted cut my yard won't come cut my yard because he don't go through the flooding. The mailman won't deliver the mail. You have to go to the post office. A lot of inconveniences go along with just saying your street is flooded. Well, there's a lot of streets flooded, but there's a lot of inconveniences that go along with it. So, what I'm asking here today is that the commission meet with us to see some more short-range pants, because after seven years, we've had very little luck in alleviating our flood.
Commissioner Hagan, you're recognized. He would like to address you.
Sir, I want to thank you for coming down and sharing your concerns. I know that my office has been working on this. I'm going to ask my aide to come out and to meet with you guys right now. But at the same time, I want to refer this over to the county administrator to see if we can find an expedited solution to this issue. But sir, my legislative aide will come out and meet with you guys right now. Thank you.
All right. Can someone help with my speaker with the pictures that she has so she can use the pictures?
You have 27 seconds left. Sure. Here, it's, yeah, they stopped the clock.
Those, the picture to the right there with the boat, that's the way the lake used to look. Really, it is 90% covered with water less, 90%. That's Lake Mead, or officially, it's Mead Lake, as known as Lake Mead. That is flooding in people's backyards. That shed is right on the county line.
Okay.
I'm going to leave these pictures here for the, for the person.
Thank you. Okay, thank you.
Madam Chair, if I could just, for a moment, we did send the board information last night. My staff has been working with this neighborhood for a number of years to alleviate flooding. There are two projects that are on CIP, ready to start in March. It's always a funding issue, and there's a public hearing today to raise stormwater fees. If it's the board's desire, we can accelerate this above other projects. But it's funding, it's priority, but I just want to be sure that the board understands we have been working with the community. We do have active pumping to be sure that there isn't flooding, and we will continue to work closely with the community. And there are two projects that are funded in the CIP.
So, how far down the list are they?
Well, they're scheduled to start in March.
Oh, they are? Okay. So, six months.
They're funded, yeah.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Okay, thank you very much. We're now back to on-the-agenda speakers, and Christine Beck will...
We're comfortable with conversation and public comments about the benefits of the trail and whether the county property should be included in the rezoning submittal, that is what the agenda item is about, but it would not be appropriate to get into items that would be strictly the subject of the rezoning, such as compatibility issues and so forth. So we're going to be monitoring the comments, and we'll have people to make sure we're, we're not straying from that, but we would appreciate staying within the, those two areas, the benefits of the trail, and whether it should be included in the rezoning or not.
Very good, thank you. Chris Day is the next speaker. And following Chris will be Fred Martenson, and then Adrian Newton, Newland.
Thank you, Commissioners. Chris Day, 12107 Garden Lake Circle, Odessa, Florida. I've been before this board many times, spent my last 15 years developing in Citrus Park. Nobody's done more development along the face of this trail or along Rocky Creek in Citrus Park than what I have, and the reputation with respect to the projects that we've done, the communication with the community, conditioning our projects in a manner such that they not only comply with the CPV requirements, requests of Planning Commission for orientation, but also with public comment, has been something I've spent thousands of hours doing. I did have a public meeting last week with a gentleman that I'm working for as development manager for this project, Alliance Residential, and then also followed up on Saturday with a lot of the folks that are here today. I think one of the primary issues with the realignment and the concern and the confusion with it is, we had originally submitted a plan that suggested only a slight deviation of where it aligns to. We were asked by Planning Commission in conjunction with the CPV, this being the center of the community and so forth, to move that orientation right up against Gunn Highway. As I mentioned to all the folks on Saturday, we're fine with a condition that takes the trail realignment specifically back to the placement that we submitted it, which is still a good 87 feet back from the edge of the property line and 106 feet back from the road, that we would be fine being conditioned with where the trail goes, which allows it to stay inside the canopy of the trees, we have a full tree survey to back that up, and again, we have done a lot of work with the trail. I was actually part of another realignment that went before this board and was approved last year, looking at the radiuses of what diversion can happen for the design speed. That particular realignment is where you come off the overpass, so you're at a higher rate of speed. And a very important asset of this is, there's one trail crossing shown here. The proposal to realign specifically enables the ability to get rid of some of these trail crossings, bring it down to one, so we have one focused interaction versus four commercial project interactions with the trail. And then as we get into site construction plans and actually develop what's going to happen, I actually invited some people under public recording last week on Thursday to be part of a steering committee that speaks to the safety measures as it relates to, what do the construction plans ultimately look like? How do we ensure trail users have the right-of-way? How do we ensure there's detectable warnings? The realignment, I would also tell you, by having to shift just slightly, it also tells you, you got to slow down a little bit and you're coming up on something, and you notice this realignment shows the crossing at about the midway point, once you've already made the realignment. Tells you something's coming, we add some safety measures, and we can come up with a way that works with the community. And again, I cite the trees and the canopy, nobody wants it more. My kids actually stay with my mother in Village Center Townhomes straight across the street.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Fred Martenson, and then Adrian Newland and Andres Valentin. Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Fred Martenson, I've lived in the Citrus Park area for about 25 years now. I'm talking about the Citrus Park Trail, the Upper Tampa Bay Trail realignment. I think it's a bad idea, many reasons. We heard from Mr. Day, it seems like a little bit of the plan has changed from what's posted up there on the website from the county, but let me go into some of the reasons why this is a bad idea. One is the safety. This trail is going to be moved within, as far as I can tell, within 25 feet of the road from 110 feet back. It's going to be real close to the road, it's going to eliminate the buffer trees that could prevent cars from going into the people using the trail, whether it's bikers, runners, or walkers. So the buffer trees is there. Now, this trail moving it closer to the road, which is Gunn Highway there, those cars are going to queue up across the trail waiting to turn to get out of this proposed apartment complex. It's going to block the trail, and people are going to be more worried about in a car, seeing the cars coming up and down Gunn Highway and not paying attention to the trail. Furthermore, this trail is going to arc towards the road and back away from the road. That curve is going to further limit the sight of people queuing up to turn there and not being able to, excuse me, see the people on the trail. And if you look at the plan, not only is it going to curve, but they're going to build a commercial building on both of those curves, so, and a parking lot, so it's going to further not be able to see the people on the trail. This is also not good business sense for the county. The trail as it was proposed before I came to the meeting, moves the trail and we would lose, they would lose, the county would lose about 40% of the trail because a lot of it would be in Gunn Highway, the buffer that was on both sides of the trail. It'd be less desirable, so the land would be less desirable as having a canopy on both sides. Now it will have canopy only on one side because you can't build on the road or plant trees on the road, and in fact, you can't have a canopy on the other side because there'd be roads, parking spaces, and apartment buildings, so that whole canopy will be gone. Speaking of the canopy, a lot of the trees, they'd be lead you to believe that the trees would still be there and they'll preserve it, but if you have parking lots, apartment buildings, the apartment building roadways, that canopy is, is gone. So I encourage you to vote against doing this realignment, and also we'll talk about the rezoning of increasing 100%.
Thank you, thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Adrian Newland, Andres Valentin, and Nicole Lynn. Good morning.
Hey, good morning. Thank you guys for all your work and for letting us talk about this. So one thing, Run Tampa asked me to let you know that they put out a petition, and there are over 1,000 signatures on it, I think opposing the realignment. I'm just slipping that in with my comments. All right, it's my time. So I'm a little disappointed about the fact that the information meeting was only a week ago, and now you're meeting about this now. It seems inappropriate that that's the only amount of time. I would encourage you guys to go to the trail, to meet with Chris and hear what he has to say, maybe to hear more of what we have to say, because three minutes isn't a lot of time, but, and the county commissioners' meeting was not posted at the trail at all. It was not announced at the informational meeting as a way to comment, and, and I just feel like it's giving short shrift to the issue, to let the public know a week before what's going on, and then expect a decision to be made about this realignment. So that is a huge disappointment. I would say that if the realignment had to go through, I'm more in agreement with Mr. Day and what he thinks should be done with the trail as opposed to the, the more severe realignment, but I also feel like the county made the trail the way it is for a reason, and that part of the trail is the original sort of part of the trail. So I just feel like the county designed the trail in a certain way for a certain reason, and that it should be left the way it is. I think that whatever is allowed in this current situation for the kind of things envisioned in the master plan are probably what should be kept to. I think the realignment opens the door to a lot more development that I, you know, don't know would be great for the safety of the area or the character of the area, and I do live less than half a mile from that trail, by the way, in Citrus Park. So thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Andres Valentin, and then Nicole Lynn and Alexandra Straumann.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Andres Valentin, I've been living in the Citrus Park area before the mall even existed, actually before the trail even existed. I've seen some good projects and some bad projects, and this is one of them. This project is not a good fit by any means. They just finished a 318 unit just off Exit 9, okay, which is basically 10 minutes away from this proposed development, okay? Also, right off of Exit 10, they're building more townhomes, which is another 10 minutes just right around the corner from there, okay? So I'm asking this board to recalibrate, reevaluate, and take this project to a more suitable area. If it ain't broke, don't fix it. Upper Tampa Bay Trail is just fine the way it is, so please don't destroy it. I'm not against growth, growth is good, but just, let's just use some common sense here, okay?
Excuse me, sir, just want to make sure, keep your comments to the trail and the benefits of the trail, if you don't mind, just to make sure that we don't-
Okay, I'm already done.
Okay.
So there's no sound reason for this project. It's a horrible vision and a bad investment for the community.
Thank you very much. Nicole Lynn, Alexandra Straumann, and then Vanessa Diaz. Nicole? Good morning.
Good morning. Nicole Lynn, 7603 Wimpy Lane, Tampa, Florida. I live in Citrus Park. I also have, my in-laws own a piece of property there, three houses down from the trail, right by Citrus Park, Little League, I've grown up in the area, have my family grown up in the area, use the trail all the time. A realignment, I don't think, would discourage us at all from using the trail whatsoever, so I look forward to it moving forward, because what hasn't happened is actual development of this property in the limits of which has been defined by the county as a Citrus Park Village Plan as a downtown area, so we're expecting some growth here, we're encouraging it, and I look forward to it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker is Alexandra Straumann, then Vanessa Diaz, and Teresa Courier.
Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Ally, and I just want you to imagine this. A group of high school students getting up at 6:00 in the morning, five days a week, all summer long, to run. They all walk into the trail before the sun has even risen, surrounded by a canopy of trees that shield them from the outside world. As the sun begins to rise, more and more people begin to arrive on the trail, groups of bikers training for their next triathlon, families with their young children, and friends going for a morning walk, all wave hello as they pass by. This scenario is the reality for me, as many of the other residents of Citrus Park. I am a senior at Steinbrenner High School and am the captain of the cross-country team there. I am here today on behalf of the girls' team to urge the people of Tampa Bay to take, to take action against this proposal. This proposal would turn the Upper Tampa Bay Trail from a dream into a nightmare, but it seems unthinkable, but this is the unfortunate reality that the Upper Tampa Bay Trail is facing. The plan to move one section of the trail closer to Gunn Highway is a terrible idea. Doing this would require the abolishment of a beautiful canopy of trees that line the trail and give it its beauty. These apartments would result in hundreds of cars crossing the trail at all hours of the day and night, creating an incredibly dangerous situation for all of the athletes and walkers that are just on the trail every day. On top of this, nobody would be able to use the trail during the sunny hours of the day, as there would be no shade to cover from the beating rays of the sun. These apartments would move the trail closer to Gunn Highway, and that is a road that people constantly drive recklessly on. Last Saturday, when we were at the trail in the morning, there were cars that were practically drag racing down Gunn Highway at 6:30 a.m. Now, it would, it would only get worse during night, and I have never heard of a parent that would want their young child to be walking closer to a busy road. On August 30th, the county administered a meeting to discuss the trail realignment that some of my teammates and I attended. Upon expressing our concerns, it became very apparent that the trail developers had not even thought of how this would affect the people that use the trail every single day. It was an immediate red flag that they were looking to do this at the expense of the trail users, and not even taking into consideration the fact that this trail is used by hundreds of people every single day. This proposal would destroy one of the only safe and accessible places in Tampa to run. Please do not allow the center of a community to be taken away, because there's no price that can be placed on what the trail gives all of us. Thank you.
Thank you. Vanessa Diaz, Teresa Courier, and then Andy Warner.
Good morning. My name is Vanessa Diaz, I'm a Hillsborough County resident. Thank you for letting me speak. I'm a fairly new triathlete in the area, having trained for the last three years for a few triathlons in the community. I have explored all types of training paths, I've ridden the Whitha Lakouchi, the Pinellas Trail, the River Walk, I have ridden and run, I've done sentry rides from Coachman Park all the way to Fort De Soto, I have absolutely been on the roads here. The beauty of the Upper Tampa Bay Trail is, I feel the community has failed cyclists tremendously in protecting them, in teaching cyclist safety. As a runner, I can always stop, even though I'm terrified of running on the road, I'm also terrified more so of riding my bike on the road. And Upper Tampa Bay Trail has been unique in the sense that there are only two major roads that I have to cross, and they're not that major, they're not major at all. I ride the trail from Memorial Trailhead all the way down to the end. I have, oh God, refrained from crossing Ehrlich. The whole transition of realigning it would mean that we would realign, come back, then have to come back to the stoplight, then to fearfully cross that stoplight, because right-turn users are not mindful of left, people coming from their left. One driveway in this particular area would not improve with, it's the density that makes it worse, not so much the use of the one driveway versus the four, because right now, I didn't even know people lived on those four driveways, because I rarely ever see a vehicle. Probably in the last three years, I may be encountered one. So density brings the problem to that area, and I know that you want to talk about certain things, but the, the beauty of this trail is that they have that original section, is the original section, which was a rails-to-trail transition. I'm concerned about conservancy with the rails-to-trail movement that we have here in Florida now, connecting all of our trails from Pinellas straight through to the other side of the state, what is being, being done for that preservation. So safety, preservation, and serenity, I mean, it's one of the best places to run with the least amount of interruptions, so adding a business or few businesses, we don't need to be Pinellas Trail to be great, we need to be Upper Tampa Bay Trail and what that in itself affords the community. I have not run on a more serene stretch of land or trail in all of Tampa, other than the Upper Tampa Bay Trail. So thank you for your time, and if you need to talk to me, I'm here.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Teresa Courier, Andy Warner, and Marcus Kleeb.
Good morning. Good morning. Thank you for your time and for listening to our viewpoint, and we appreciate the work that you all do, because I'm sure it's not very easy, a lot of different viewpoints, a lot of different demographics that you have to serve. I am going to go forward and expound on what the young lady before me had just remarked on. The Upper Tampa Bay Trail is a jewel. As you hear, it draws people from across counties, many miles. Secondarily, I attest to it from my own personal experience. I'm a resident of 32 years at the same residence at 14514 Marklin Green's Place. My son will hopefully be the third generation to own our property. One of the things that drew us to this community was the fact that we were so close to such pristine, at the time, green places. Up to this point, it has felt like the Upper Tampa Bay Trail has remained that way. In respect to the fact, more and more, we are hearing the fact that we all need to be more mobile, we all need to be separating ourselves from traffic congestion and all the other aggravation that can cause mental health issues. We have a huge problem with that in our society. As many of the people before me expressed, this park is our disengagement, our being able to get away. Now currently, I, as I recommend along with Andres, Alexandra, we hope that you guys will walk this park. You need to experience this yourself, to see what you are possibly willing to trade off for this land grab, and I think that you will see that it is not worth that. First of all, Chris Day from the Development Group indicated that there would be a replacement of the canopy. You cannot replace trees immediately, it will take decades, it may take another generation to restore this canopy. Secondarily, we have a huge elderly population, and we have a lot of special needs kids. Their families use this park, are you aware of that? The elderly need to use this park so they can regulate their heat and their ability to stay hydrated, and we're going to have a lot more health issues if people try to use the park in a way that you're predicting or promoting. Thirdly, Chris Day used this as his way of offering this up as a scare tactic to keep us from considering multiple developments, to go to one. However, those multiple developments will happen, they will be gradual- Thirdly, Krista used this as his way of offering this up as a scare tactic, to keep us from considering multiple developments, to go to one. However, those multiple developments will happen, they will be gradual, and we'll get a chance to decide on every single one, instead of just one. I highly recommend, we do not proceed forward with this development plan. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Andy Warner, and then Marcus Klebe, and he will be our last speaker for the 45 minutes allowed this morning. I just want to let everybody know that we will continue public comment at the end of our County Commission regular agenda today. Thank you.
Thank you. Andy Warner, 7808 Winward Way, Odessa, Florida. I'd like to speak briefly on both Item B3 and A9. With regard to B3, I'm kind of new to this game. I just started looking at the schematics and the proposed changes yesterday, so I really don't want to take a hard stance, one way or another, on it. But, I will say this, a culture has grown from this trail and around this trail. As you can see recreationally, even competitively, you have high schools use the trail, you have communities that use the trail, and it's a way of bringing people together in a way that maybe we didn't have years ago, before the trail came in. So, I just like to stress that it's very important to take those people's perspectives into account before making this decision. And then, next on Item A9, we all know what that is, the approval of the resolution for the school board to get that halfpenny sales tax on the ballot. I know we're all waiting anxiously to see what the OPAGA report says. I suspect that might have been why it got moved later into the meeting. But regardless of what that report says, I would encourage the board to approve that resolution, approve that language, and allow the school district to go ahead and ask the voters for that halfpenny sales tax. As we all know, the district is in very deep trouble financially, and there certainly are accusations going around either way about management of funds, but I think we all can agree that them having more funds would be a benefit to the students, and it'd be a benefit to the district, especially considering the issues that we have with lead in the drinking water and the faulty air conditioning systems. The money raised from that tax would go directly to projects like that. So, I encourage the board to please pass along the language in that resolution and do the right thing. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Marcus Klebe, and he will be our last speaker for the morning 45 minutes allowed for public comment. Good morning.
Good morning. Commissioners, my name is Marcus Kleba. I'm a resident of West Chase. My wife is an avid runner, and I'm a community activist. Let's talk about the public trust. There are seven of you. You're supposed to serve the public trust. Included in that is an obligation to preserve, preserve assets of this community, not just to give them away to developers, but to act in the best interests of the people and preceding generations. Have you been on the trail? It sounds, it looks, it smells natural. The county has aided and abetted, basically, the strip mallization of Tampa. Mass transit and green spaces are obligations, and maybe Stacy White and Sandra Merman, Commissioners, if you could look up, because we are speaking to you as the public.
I am looking at you.
Oh, you were not, and that's okay.
No, you're on my screen, right in front of me.
I understand when the public is being listened to by politicians and when it isn't. And don't think we don't notice that you are doing it everywhere. Hiding the ball, last-minute notices, giveaways. Stop prioritizing profit. Cars, apartments, more, more. Do your job. Mass transit and green spaces are a requirement. In November, there's an opportunity for different voices, and if you won't listen, then maybe the people behind me will. Andrew Davis, Angela Byrd Song, Mariella Smith, and Kimberly Overman have all told me today that I can speak for them and say, they are not in favor of this land swap. They will not give away public space for developers. And in November, understand that we are watching, and that what has been done at the Board of County Commissioner level is not going to continue. There is a blue wave coming, and that's maybe why Commissioner Merman didn't jump this year, I don't know. Everyone's playing musical chairs, but there are four seats available. And if you won't preserve the public trust, if you won't preserve our green spaces, then we will find Commissioners who do. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that concludes our public comment portion for this morning, for the 45 minutes, and we will resume the rest, the speakers, to speak at the end of our agenda today. And so, now, I need a motion to approve consent. We have a motion to approve the consent agenda, and we have a second motion by Commissioner White, second by Commissioner Miller. Is there any further discussion or question? Seeing none, please record your vote.
Commissioner Higginbotham? Did you know? Motion passed, four to one. Commissioner Higginbotham voted no.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Merrill?
We could, at this point, if the board wants, waive the rules to take B3, since folks are here for this item.
Okay. Do I have a motion to waive the rules? Motion by Commissioner Miller, second by Commissioner White, to waive the rules to take up Item B3 while the people are still here on that item. Please record your vote.
Motion carried, five to zero.
Okay, thank you.
Josh?
And we're now on Item B3.
Yes.
Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. Josh Biladi, Real Estate and Facility Services. This item would authorize the Director of Real Estate and Facility Services to sign the application associated with the rezoning request for the development of a 20-acre apartment complex located along Gunn Highway in Citrus Park. Since the rezoning application includes land that is owned by the county containing the Upper Tampa Bay Trail, this authorization is needed in order for the rezoning process to continue and proceed to the zoning hearing master. This authorization is limited to submittal of applications for review. Real Estate and Facilities is presenting this item from a transactional standpoint, as the department that'll be signing the applications as the property owner. If a proposed land exchange and associated trail realignment does move forward in the future, staff will bring back to the board separately an agreement, which will be negotiated, to ensure it protects the county's best interests and addresses input from the community. A public meeting was held last week to obtain community input regarding the trail, and we are still in the 14-day comment period. While the plans presented are only conceptual and the process is early on, the public has expressed concerns which need to be addressed, and we've heard similar concerns here today as well. Staff from Conservation and Environmental Lands Management Department are here and can talk to the public feedback received so far, and Development Services is here as well, if there are questions regarding the rezoning process.
Thank you. Yes, we do have questions. Commissioner Kemp, you're recognized.
I have several questions. I think first, Forrest Turberville may be able to answer some of the first ones I have, about the use of the trail. And Forrest, what's your title?
I'm Director, Conservation and Environmental Lands Management.
I know that this trail is extraordinarily popular, and I had called you up to find out what our numbers are. How many people a year use this trail?
Approximately 300,000 users per year.
300,000 users per year use this trail. This is a, this is really a jewel, I think, and particularly this actually special spot where we have old growth. How did this trail get established?
Well, this trail was established back in the early 2000s. Most of this portion was constructed around 2002.
And I think one of the special points that's been brought out about it is it's off the road, and it has an old canopy.
It does. The county owns approximately 80 feet of the trail. The trail itself is about 18 feet in width, the paved portion. Of course, we own about 30 feet on both sides, so that's where a majority of your canopy is located.
So, and this is for staff, Josh, maybe this, but I have a statement, it was part of the record, from April 12th, and I'll still want to ask you some questions, Forrest. But, I have this from April 12th, and it's a statement back then, saying that, this is from the developer, "An essential element of this rezoning will be relocating a portion of the Upper Tampa Bay Trail and a land swap with Hillsborough County. The applicant has already begun efforts towards this end, and acknowledges that upon consummation of an agreement for the land transaction, Hillsborough County's inclusion as an applicant or participant of this rezoning will be required." So, we knew about this back in April, that this would have to be part of the process. I just don't understand, we didn't have our meeting, if I understand it right, with the community, and maybe you could speak to this, I don't know who was there, but our meeting with the community was not until last week, even though we knew that this was on the, this was prospectively out there since April. Is that accurate?
I don't know that we were aware of the schedule back in April. Maybe Forrest can talk to that a little bit.
But, we did know back in April that the land swap was part of the deal, because this is dated April 12th, 2018, and this is, part of what we have is our agenda item, and that it would require, this is from the developer, that it would require this land swap, and why, we're just finding out about it now, I'm just not sure, but can you...
Well, I guess, I can't talk to, I'm not sure exactly when the rezoning process was submitted, but from a standpoint of...
It wasn't submitted until recently, but this was part of our record with the county.
So, today's item is required because of the rezoning application?
Right, 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 right.
But, I just want to caution, we still cannot talk about the rezoning process.
We're not talking about that, but, but...
I just want to make sure that we all remember.
So, Forrest, last, when was the meeting that we had with the, with the, with people in the community?
The initial meeting with the developer, I believe, was in March or April. At that point, we let the developer know that if there was going to be any shift in the trail, and at that time, it was approximately a 20 to 25-foot shift to the west, that at that point, it would need to go to the Greenways and Trails Committee first, and then we would need to have a public meeting. We did hold the meeting with the Greenways Committee on July the 10th. They offered, while I wouldn't say support, they offered a statement of no objection to the trail. However, with that said, the plan proposed at that time had a straight 20-foot shift to the west, and the plan has changed somewhat since then, to where it's now going out closer to Gunn Highway and making sort of a circuitous route, and then coming back in further to the north. So, the plan, or I should say, the conceptual plan that the Greenways and Trails Committee looked at is not the plan that was presented last Thursday to the public.
And so, the public didn't know about this till, or it wasn't presented with anything, and I, this meeting today is a precursor to the zoning meeting, but were there any signs posted on the trail about this meeting today? Any information?
I need to defer to Communications. I don't believe there was anything about this meeting today, no.
This, and this meeting that happened last Thursday night, before Labor Day weekend, with this scheduled today, how many people attended that meeting?
We had 44 participants at last Thursday's meeting.
And how were they noticed? How did they find out about that meeting last Thursday?
It was on the county website. There were two newspaper ads placed in the Tampa Bay Times, I think, one on August 19th and the other on the 24th. And in addition to that, there were four signs placed within that general area.
And what did you hear from the community at that meeting?
I'd say, well over 90% opposed shifting the trail.
And you had it open for comments after that, that people could file with you?
That's correct.
With regards to that? And you've gotten, so far, how many comments?
As of 3 o'clock yesterday, we had 214 comments, 210 opposed shifting the trail, and four were in favor.
Okay. And again, 300,000 people a year use this trail. Is this the most-used trail in Hillsborough County, the most-used facility in Hillsborough County that we have?
Yes, by far.
Okay, thanks. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
I also want to find out, so the developers are Alliant? That's the people that are trying to do this?
Yes, the name of the developer is Alliance Residential.
And who's the principal with Alliant Residential? I know we've heard from Krista's and the attorney, but we don't know a principal, we don't have a principal?
I know.
Okay.
There is someone here representing.
Right, representing.
He just raised his hand.
Right, but he's not Alliant, or at least I don't know that you are.
Yes, sir. Sir, okay, yeah, you can't speak without being at the podium.
Okay. And the developers, I guess, first approached our staff with this back in April, and how many county departments have been working on, have spent time working on this request so far?
My Department of Real Estate and Facility Services has been involved, Conservation and Environmental Lands Management, Development Services, and I believe Public Works Department as well.
And do we know about, how many hours of staff time have already been invested in this?
I could not say that right now, no.
Okay. I want to also, I just want to ask Christine Beck, and I guess you're the, I want to ask about the board's discretion in this decision. And I want one thing to be clear, and I want to confirm it with you. This decision today is completely up to the board, correct?
That's correct. The decision is whether to include the county land in the rezoning application.
So, if we vote no today, this would bring this whole thing to an end, correct?
It could, yes.
And then, the developers can just figure out how they can build with the land that they have, on the property that they have, and they have a prime piece of property, you know, and the other, the other thing about this, for those of you, I brought a trail presentation here last year. Trails all over the country are the hottest thing going. In Atlanta, the Belt Line, the properties are so priced out, that is a trail that goes around Atlanta, and they're having trouble. They can't figure out how to get affordable housing at it. It is high, high-value property, and we're talking about essentially destroying the most precious part of the trail that we have at this place and putting it next to a road. And that is when we're number two in the nation, in this county, for pedestrian and bicycle deaths, and we're looking at, we're looking at at what is a terrible decision about moving forward on this. And if we say no to this, we can just send the developer back to come up with a plan that's good, and doesn't require moving this. We should not be doing this. Our trail, our trail is not for sale and should not be by this board. I also want to thank everyone who came today. In fact, I felt like cheering for you all, for standing up. I know we heard about the comments from the meeting, 210 comments. Here's my emails in just the last 24 hours, more than 90 emails. I also want the board to know, I know one of the, one of you mentioned it out there, but there's a petition online, in just five days, more than 1,000 people have signed this petition. And because, because they can't be here, I want you to hear a little bit about, about what they're saying. "It's an escape from direct sunlight and a peaceful place to get in a zone and put mileage in. And it's not only runners, it's people walking their dogs, riding bikes, rollerblading. It brings people together. Do not do this for selfish gain for another money-hungry developer. Save this precious area for those who enjoy spending time outside and want to run, walk, bike, etc., in a tranquil environment on, in, on another street," in quotes. I will tell you that on this petition writing, students wrote comments from Sickles High School, from Chamberlain High School, and Steinbrenner High School, about how important this trail, and in particular, this shaded trail was to them. The high school track and country teams, this is from a quote, "Use this trail, it's safe. There are very few places to walk with children enjoying nature in the area. To be close to such a beautiful trail is one of the reasons we are in this area." This is, actually, they say it's a good thing it's an election year. "I run, I run cross-country for Sickles. Without a part of Sickles, history is lost, and accessibility after school practices is gone. It's no small thing for us to wipe away the canopy and put this next to a road and allow for ingress and egress into this area. Because my daughter runs on this trail from, with her track team, it gives them someplace to run without worrying about traffic. Why do they have to try to build something on every sliver of land? This town can't handle any more traffic. It's bad enough, and we don't have the schools or roads to handle more." Our cross-country team at Gaither always runs there, and I'd hate to see this place destroyed. destroyed. Please keep this place how it is." This is more than 1,000 people, as I said, in just a few days, who have said that this trail is a precious and important place. And, well, I'll say this, someone here says, after giving a long history, a full page about their life next to the trail, is while ensuring that the county does not become so overcrowded, that we, that they want to see something different done, and they say, "I can't believe that we need a petition to save a six-foot-wide path that is only 17-years-old." I can't believe it either, and I think we need to be voting no, and, well, actually, I think someone has to bring this up to move it forward, since it's a staff recommendation. So, I will say that I would hope that no one will bring this forward, that we don't move forward with this.
Okay, thank you. Before I recognize Commissioner Hagan, Mr. Merrill, or Christine, I'd like for one of you to just clarify exactly what our position is today on this.
Yes, so it's important, the recommendation, we're not recommending the trail realignment, we're not recommending the project, I make that very clear. The only thing we're recommending is to move this forward to rezoning requires, because the county is part, owns the land as part of it, requires authorizing, simply authorizing Josh to sign it. So, I want to be absolutely clear, when we brought this forward, that's the only purpose, it's the only way we can get to rezoning. At rezoning is where there's numerous public notices, there's numerous public meetings, and you decide on the merit of the project. We're not recommending the realignment at all, or the project, it's simply a ministerial action to move it to rezoning where all of that discussion takes place. I just wanted to be sure everyone understands that.
Okay, thank you. Please, no outbursts from the audience. Okay, Commissioner Hagan, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I've got a number of notes here, and I'm going to jump around here a little bit. First of all, I want to thank everyone for coming down and sharing your concerns on this project. I want to preface my comments by saying, on my time on this board, no one has supported the Upper Tampa Bay Trail more than me. I have personally championed connectivity, I've secured funding for several legs of the trail, while, while ensuring that existing neighborhoods were protected along the way. I understand what a gem that we have with the Upper Tampa Bay Trail, and how it improves the quality of life for our residents. So, I am inclined to oppose moving the trail, however, we do need to consider a few things. The landing question is already zoned residential, significant, and this is from Adam Gormley, for Planning and Growth, significant development rights already exist on each and every parcel concerned. In fact, as we heard from the applicant, commercial development is also permitted on either side of the trail by way of the Citrus Park Village Plan. The item before us, is before us because the trail is included in the rezoning, however, if we deny this, the developer can simply come back and reapply, but we would then lose all of our leverage and negotiating power. Whether we approve this item or not, development will occur at this location at some point. However, it's better to be in position to negotiate with the developer, so we can preserve the aesthetics of the trail and ensure the safety of the riders as best as possible. And by being at the table, we can potentially have the developer provide and pay for increased buffering, shade, trail amenities, and possibly transportation improvements. To me, there's a significant value in having the conversation. Now, by having the conversation, I want to stress, this does not imply that I support moving or realigning the trail, I want to stress that. All that being said, I'm still struggling to understand why today's action is necessary. I'm thinking about a project that we had, it's not similar, but it's not too far off, the New Tampa Cultural Center, when there was a, a business plan that was required in advance of the rezoning. If we end this today, as Commissioner Kemp said, we lose all of the leverage on having the private sector pay for necessary amenities and improvements that would improve the trail. And so, what I'm looking for, and I don't know if this is possible, and I'm going to ask Christine, is there a way to not, not approve today's item, but preserve our ability to be at the table, to have the developer pay for the many improvements and amenities that I believe in my heart, these people want to have occur there? I don't know the answer to that, but I see potential for a win-win. I also am confused, in my notes, I see the Gateways Committee did not oppose it initially, I felt if this was such a raw deal, man, that would have been DOA, but then I hear the plans changed, I hear the applicant here today saying, "Well, we initially applied for this, Planning Commission changed it, we're willing to go back." I also heard there's only one meeting, it seems to me that there's room here to potentially get a consensus and to have a win-win, and I'm just, I'm wondering legally, do we have any, any, any options?
Any options? Yes, Commissioner, I, I understand your question and, and the reference to the New Tampa Cultural Center, in that case, the, the business terms and the business plan, as you mentioned, were, were worked out prior and made contingent on the rezoning, and so that would be an option for you here, to explore whether there could be a win-win with the, the, the actual transaction, which is mentioned in the agenda item as possibly coming next, where the board would have discretion there as well, but you could hold off on having the property go into the rezoning, and direct staff to see if there is a way to work out a compatible business plan that, that satisfies everybody. I don't know if that's possible or not, but you could, you could see and give the time for that to develop.
And honestly, I don't know if that's possible either, but I do believe that's a, that's a conversation worth having, I think it's in everyone's best interest. I'm interested in hearing what the will of the board is, but I'm, I'm inclined to, to go in that direction. If we do that, I imagine we should probably ask the applicant your thoughts on that. So, I'm leaning going in that direction, but I want to hear what other board members think.
Just right now, just Commissioner Kemp, Commissioner Kemp, you're recognized, and Commissioner White.
Thank you. I'd like to be clear, that the subject of our agenda item today is to delegate authority to sign zoning and other development-related applications for the Upper Tampa Bay Trail property in Citrus Park, in conjunction with a proposed development. As one person wrote on the petition, "We don't need to do this, we don't want this, do not authorize the staff to negotiate with this developer to do a land swap, that's what this is about. Make the developer work within the existing boundaries of his property, they can do that always. If we don't do this today, yes, they can work on these things, and if there's amenities to be had, I cannot imagine, actually, an amenity more wonderful than this piece of trail." So, there's...
Okay, we've, we've made that point several times, so I think we need to kind of get to where we want to land on this.
Well, what I'm saying is that if we approve anything today to go forward, it, it is wrong, because this kind of negotiation can be done and is done every single day on every single land deal in terms of zoning, so there's no reason to approve this to go forward and allow for any kind of land swap to be, to happen. They need to work within the existing bounds, and they can do a wonderful development within the existing bounds of what they have.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner White, you're recognized.
Commissioner Hagan, if I understand you correctly, you would make some type of an alternative motion, that in fact would not approve Item B3, and we would go, go down some different pathway, is that right? Rather than delegating the authority that we're talking about?
In, in discussion with, with Christine, I think it makes sense to, to not have this be a part of the rezoning, but allow the, the applicant to attempt to negotiate terms that would be favorable to the community in advance of the rezoning coming forward. And if that doesn't happen, which is a distinct possibility, then I imagine the applicant would simply move forward with the rezoning without this being a part of it, and my only concern there is, we lose the opportunity to have the developer pay for improvements and amenities that the trail users would want. And we simply don't know the answer to that until we have that conversation.
And, that's exactly why we brought the item. We've, so, yes, we can do as Christine suggested. We felt we had more leverage, being a party to it, we're not recommending the realignment, it's for all of those other reasons, that there are going to be transportation impacts, that we want to leverage dollars. We thought we'd be in a better position in negotiation with the authority, you can do it without the authority, that's fine, that was our recommendation, I just want to be clear about that. It isn't about hating the trail, it isn't about hating trees, it's about giving you leverage, giving us leverage to get a better deal. Whatever you want to do is fine, I just want to be sure it's clear what our intention was and what a recommendation is.
That's true. Okay, Commissioner White, here are you.
Well, yeah, I, I just want to close by saying that, that what I think I'm hearing sounds like a common sense approach, that could allow for further negotiation, I'll have to listen very closely to the language of the motion, to see where we're attempting to get, and, you know, I, I just have to say to the group, for the record, you would be hard-pressed to find a commissioner on this board that's been more supportive of things like our trail system, our environmental lands program, better land use policy than me. Okay, I'm a community-driven individual, and I have to say that I was absolutely appalled by the rhetoric of your final speaker, Mr. Kleeb, that talked about a blue wave, and democratic political candidates, and tried to inject partisan politics into this important community matter. And I just want to say to this group, that I'm generally with you on these types of issues, I'm generally with you here, I'm generally not supportive of realigning the Upper Tampa Bay Trail, but I've got to tell you that if Mr. Kleeb is going to be your spokesperson, he's going to set you back. There's no business for that type of rhetoric, on a community issue such as this. Okay, you're, you have a commissioner here, he, he told me to look up and tried to imply that I was disrespecting him. Let me tell you, I listen with my ears, not with my eyes, and having, having practiced as a pharmacist for the past 22 years, I've become a very good multitasker, okay? I can be multitasking, and I can be listening with my ears. I'm with you, I want to be with you, but I've got to tell you that if he's going to be your spokesperson, then it's going to set you back.
Okay, okay, that's not, thank you, Commissioner White, and Commissioner Miller, before you speak, do you want Commissioner Hagan to...
Let me speak first.
Okay, thank you, you're recognized.
I've been quiet, just listened to this whole issue, and I want to thank everyone for coming out here, regardless of what side you may be on, obviously, the public, the majority of them are against this. I heard what Commissioner Hagan had to say, and I, I think that we may be able to get to a compromise here, hopefully, but I need to ask Ms. Beck a question. If we are to hear what Commissioner, if we are to do what Commissioner Hagan said, I think the first thing we need to do is deny this particular item the way it is, am I correct?
That's my understanding.
And then have Commissioner Hagan come forth and make a motion to see if we can get staff, community, developer, and everything else rolling, am I correct?
Correct.
Okay, I'm going to make a motion that we deny B3.
Second.
Okay, we have a, a motion to deny by Commissioner Miller's...
Let me back up, let me rephrase my motion. I make a motion that we deny D3, and if the motion passes, that we then refer back to Commissioner Hagan to make his statement and possible motion to carry forth, that's my motion.
Okay, motion by Commissioner Miller, seconded by Commissioner White and Kemp, and Commissioner Hagan, both of them, you did want to speak, you were signed up, you're recognized.
Thank you, and I've been all ears, and I'm profoundly hard of hearing, and I use the captioning, so I take exception to, I've got it, you know, to look up, because I am dependent on captioning, for those of you who think that I'm not paying attention, but I'm concerned with the way this was framed and presented, because it seemed to me that the comments, the, the public didn't quite understand what we were trying to accomplish, especially in the, the area of the leverage. I was intrigued and impressed with Commissioner Hagan's proposal, and before we vote on this motion, would the motion that would go forward, that Commissioner Hagan would put together, would it involve the authorization for the signature? For the...
I think what they're saying, as I understand from Mr. Merrill, that the signature was only needed to include the county land inside the zoning process. What Commissioner Hagan's motion will be, is that we will deny that happening, but his motion, I don't know what it is yet, but it will include the discussion and the collaboration still with the developer and the citizens to move forward. But, no, we would, by denying this, we take the county parcel out.
That's the intent of my motion.
And that's the intent of his motion.
Okay, I'm all ears.
Okay, and I do want to also thank everyone for coming out today, I do want to tell you that this board works really hard on trails, and Commissioner Hagan has been a diehard supporter of anything having to do with the outdoors. I think he's been really just a stalwart supporter, as Commissioner White, every commissioner on this board. I know, I have been working on the South Coast Greenway Trail since I've been on this commission, I am now working on, and got funding in the budget this year, to finish the Upper Tampa Bay Trail, to do the PD&E, to finish the trail, which is something I know you all do want. So, we're all working really hard, and I understand these issues can get, you know, it's black and white, you read something on the paper and you interpret it, but actually, I think at the end of the day, we do work hard to try and come to an agreement. So, we have a motion by Commissioner Miller, seconded by Commissioner Kemp and White, is there any further discussion? Saying none, please accord your vote.
Motion carried, six to zero.
Okay, and Commissioner Hagan, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and again, my motion would be, and Christine, correct me, or feel free to add on if necessary, would just be to direct staff to work with the community and the developer on conditions for a business plan, to see if a win-win can be achieved, as part of that, I want to require, I don't know if I'll put a number, but additional public hearings as part of that, and just determine if something, if a win-win can, can occur, if it can, great, if it can't, that's fine, too.
Second.
Did you add anything to that?
No, I think that satisfies it, it really is just leapfrogging over this to get to see, to the point of seeing if there's any business terms to be developed.
Okay, and I'll ask you to restate it before we vote, Commissioner Kemp, you're recognized.
Thank you. I'd just like to make an amendment to the motion, just to ensure, and amend the motion to make sure that there's no movement of the trail or land swap to be considered as part of this move forward.
Okay, there's a amendment to the motion by Commissioner Kemp, is there a second?
A second.
Okay, Commissioner Miller seconded the amendment to the motion, you're recognized for a discussion? You want to discuss, there is more, no more discussion?
No more discussion.
So, you leave your second, okay, and would you repeat it, please?
My amendment would be that there is no movement, that included in this is a bar, no movement of the trail or land swap as part of further discussions, that the, that the county's 100-foot, which is what it is, trail, both sides, 15 feet, but there's 100 feet in there, is not up for consideration as part of any further discussion with the developer, that they can do anything else, but that we protect that trail and our county property.
Okay, Commissioner Miller, you're recognized.
I have a procedural question to Ms. Kemp.
Please clear the board.
If... If that amendment passes, does that gut his motion?
There's no need for it.
There's no need for the motion if her amendment passes. I think that the flavor of your motion, well, you speak, you're...
Well, I'm asking Ms. Beck.
Well, I don't know enough about the, all the possibilities here. It certainly seems to take away some of the negotiating power. I think I was envisioning that there might be a way to do a realignment that didn't upset the community. I don't know enough about the facts, but...
Let me, let me, folks, let me say something. And I've heard you, and I understand where you're coming from, but the art of being successful in this business is the art of compromise. And I think that you need to at least sit down at the table and try to compromise with our staff, with each other, and with the developer. Because my understanding, he can come back again and file this, and you may not have a say in what's going on. And that's not what you want. It's not what you want. So, again, and that was talked to me by the late Doug Jamerson, the art of being successful is compromise. So, at least have the opportunity to sit at the table and work within the compromise. If it doesn't work out, then it doesn't work out, and you back with us again, and we'll sit here and have the debate and probably vote no not to do it, but at least compromise. So, I think what I hear is Commissioner Kemp's motion really guts Commissioner Hagan's, was Commissioner Kemp's amendment guts Commissioner Hagan's motion, which I don't want to have happen, so I'm going to withdraw my second.
Next in the queue, Commissioner Hagan, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And Commissioner Miller is dead-on accurate. As Mr. Merrill indicated, the reason why they recommended having us be a party of it was to give us maximum leverage during negotiations. By defeating that recommendation and that agenda item, we lost a significant amount of leverage on doing so. We're trying to maintain some leverage to be able to negotiate, to get needed improvements for the trail, transportation improvements that the community would want. However, if we pass the amendment, there's absolutely no reason, we lose all leverage, and there's no reason for the applicant to even come to the table, they'll just move forward with the rezoning, and we will not be able to force their hand as far as making some of these needed improvements. So, we're just simply trying to maintain, to maintain our ability to potentially reach a compromise that everyone would be supportive of. Now, perhaps this is a long shot, but there's value in having that conversation, and to have a hard-line stance and not willing to do so, and to not willing to see what could potentially the developer would be willing to pay for, is extremely short-sighted.
Okay, we are still on the amendment to the motion. Commissioner Kemp, you're recogn... Oh, no, there is no amendment, that's right, so the amendment's gone. Commissioner Kemp, we're on the motion.
I just want to say that that's severely revealing to me about how this moves forward. Again, I think that there's no greater value we can have than protecting what is our county property for generations, a trail used by 300,000 people a year, and preserving that for generations to come. And we have our leverage that we typically have with any rezoning within that property to come back here, keep the trail as it is, preserve the trail as it is, they have property on either side of the trail as we typically do, we can just talk to them, we have that leverage, we have the leverage when they come back to talk about how this moves forward. I think the most precious thing we can have out of this is to keep what we already have and preserve it. So, I don't see any value in subjecting that as part of a negotiating tool to get something else. I can't imagine anything more of value than what we already have that we could get out of this deal. And we can certainly move forward like we do on every rezoning, where the county is involved, where the county has a final say, and look at what's brought up, but I don't think we should be using our precious trail for leverage.
Okay, thank you. We are on the motion by Commissioner Hagan, that was seconded by Commissioner Higginbotham. Is there any further discussion on the motion? Seeing none, please accord your vote.
Motion carried, five to one. Commissioner Kemp voted no.
Okay, thank you very much. And now, we are, we are back on our time certance.
Correct. We are at the public hearing, D1.
PowerPoint.
Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioner Johnson. Commissions, we're here to conduct a public hearing today and adopt a resolution which establishes a stormwater management, non-ad valorem assessment rates, and non-ad valorem assessment role for the calendar year 2018. This effectively, last year, you all approved a upset limit of a fee of $42 per year on a residential lot. Currently, the assessment is $36. It also changes some of the other rates proportionally as well. Just a short PowerPoint presentation to kind of go through that, please.
Okay.
So, the ordinance was originally established in 1989, about 292,000 parcels are subject to the assessment in the county, the unincorporated county. The assessment is used for capital improvements and regulatory compliance projects. Couple of years ago, we presented a five-year plan based on what the fee was at that time, $80 million in capital, a lot of going to infrastructure, repair of aged infrastructure, $50 million to culverts, $23 million to neighborhood projects, and $7.4 million for planning and water quality projects. Additional revenue will be used for additional culvert replacement. We've discovered in the last couple of years, we're seeing a higher rate of failure based on a lot of the stormwater, the storms that we've been having over the last several years. This is a comparison of our current municipal rates versus other municipalities. We're currently at $36 on the residential assessment alone compared to the other communities in the area. These are non-ad valorem assessments that show up on the tax bill, and it requires us to have this public hearing since it is a non-ad valorem assessment. July, the board approved the request for the public hearing, the legal advertisement was in July 30th. Notification was sent out to 5,854 new parcel assessments on July 24th, and we've not received any written objections to the increase for this, so this is a public hearing.
Okay, we are in the public hearing on the item D1. Is there anyone here wishing to speak in favor of item D1?
Apparently, there was someone signed up earlier. Oh, there we are.
Is there anyone here to speak in opposition? Because I didn't have anything on my list. So, please come forward. Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. I haven't been down here in a long time. My name is Charlotte Butler Nelson. I live out in the northeastern part of the county, just outside of Plant City, and I realize the need for stormwater management. What I have a real issue with is the way the fee is assessed. I don't agree with a flat fee. And let me give you an example why. Excuse me. We have a small subdivision to the north of us, and since that division was platted, there have been more outbuildings added, more paving, more driveways. All of that is creating runoff. So, why am I being assessed the same fee when someone whose footprint on their property is creating, excuse me, more of a runoff? And so, I think to be more equitable, the fee should not be flat. There should be some methodology used similar to what you use for businesses. So, that is really the main reason I'm here, and the second reason is 501(c)(3) organizations still have a footprint as well. They benefit from all of the services that are provided. I'm not sure I agree. In fact, I know I don't agree with a waiver. If a person has a bona fide hardship, that's one thing. If it's just because they're a 501(c)(3), I disagree. That concludes my comments. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Is there anyone else wishing to speak, either in favor or in opposition to item D1? Please come forward. We will now close the public hearing. There are Commissioner comments. We have a motion by Commissioner Miller, seconded by Commissioner Kemp. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, please record your vote.
Motion carried, six to zero.
That takes you to your 10:15 time certain F2, which is Commissioner Merman's item.
Yes, thank you, and I'll pass the gavel to make the motion on this to Commissioner White. I do, will make a few comments. I know Natalie King is here representing the Peppin family today, and just say, in accordance with Florida statute, we as the Hillsborough County Commission need to approve this resolution that supports the renaming of the county roadway that was passed in the legislature. This particular case, it is really a pleasure to present this resolution, to approve, to rename a section of county roadway for Arthur Peppin, or Art Peppin, as he was known to so many of us. Art and Polly Peppin were married for 50 years when Art passed in 2000. They were entrepreneurs, they founded Peppin Distributing in 1960. Anyone that knew Art and Polly or knew, know their son, Tom Peppin, know that their real business is making friends in the community. The Tampa Bay community has been good to the Peppin family over the years. Tom, Art, and Polly before him take great pride in giving back to the community that has embraced them and enriched their and their families' lives. The Peppins' family contributions through their community service, their philanthropic giving, and legacy initiatives through Peppin Distributing Company and the Peppin Family Foundation have been numerous, especially Peppin Academy. They have champion issues ranging from education, healthcare, transportation, to people with special needs and beyond. I know that Tom and his family are traveling today, but Natalie King, who represents the Peppin family, as I said before, is here to show the family's appreciation and support for this road renaming resolution. I can read the resolution into the record, which I think I really should do, and I will make the motion to approve the resolution, and I hope you all will support that. The resolution reads, "Whereas Art Peppin, also known as Art Peppin in the Tampa Bay community, along with his wife Polly, were the founders of Peppin Distributing Company and active Tampa community leaders. Through their philanthropic spirit, generously gave sizable donations to organizations throughout Tampa. Whereas Art Peppin, following his own successful heart transplant, donated $1 million to then University Community Hospital Foundation in order to open the Peppin Heart and Vascular Institute. The hospital is now known as the Peppin Heart Hospital and the Dr. Karan C. Patel Research Institute, and is the most advanced specialty digital hospital in the southeast and has emerged as a leader in cardiovascular care. Whereas Peppin gave $50,000 interest-free loan to the school that would be named Peppin Academies to help open the institution. Peppin Academies are a non-for-profit tuition-free school which has served over 1,000 students with specific learning and learning-related disabilities since its establishment in 1999. Whereas the Peppin family's many charitable contributions over several years have included the Muscular Dystrophy Association, Prevent Blindness America, McDonald Training Center, Special Olympics, Martin Luther King Scholarship Fund, American Heart Association, City of Tampa Firefighters, the University of Tampa, University of Florida, and the March of Dimes." And whereas Section 334.071 Florida statutes requires passage of a resolution by the local government in support of an honorary designation prior to the erection of markers. Whereas Senate Bill 382 relating to transportation facility designations has been passed by the Florida Legislature and which would designate that certain portion of county right-of-way, known as 56th Street, lying between East Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard and Harney Road in the city of Tampa, Florida, as Peppin Memorial Road. That certain portion of county right-of-way, known as 56th Street, lying between East Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard and Harney Road in Hillsborough County, Florida, shall be designated as Peppin Memorial Road. That this resolution shall take effect immediately upon its adoption, and that pretty much says is the bulk of the resolution. I will make a motion to pass this resolution today, and I just want to say that I'm proud to support just anything the Peppin family does, because what they, what they touch in this community turns to, turns to magic and gold for all of our citizens. And I'm just proud to do that today. Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Merman, seconded by Commissioner Hagan. Commissioner Hagan, you're recognized.
I just want to say, well-stated, Commissioner Merman, I appreciate you bringing this forward. I know we've been discussing variations of this designation for well over a decade, and I'm extremely pleased to see this moving forward. Thanks to Art Peppin, Tom Peppin, and the Peppin Foundation, we are a much better community. Their philanthropic and charitable giving is second to none, and I'm honored to support this, and thanks again for moving it forward.
Thank you. And also, the ceremony, as from staff, it looks like it will take place sometime in December for the road. They'll have a dedication at the roadside, so...
And that'd be great if staff could share that with all the Commissioners.
Absolutely.
For our calendars. Great, well, great job, Commissioner Merman, ditto to everything that you and Commissioner Hagan have said. Seeing no further discussion on the motion on the floor, please record your votes.
Motion carried, six to zero.
That takes to your 10:30 time certain F3, it's also Commissioner Merman's item.
Thank you, and I will pass the gavel over to Commissioner White again. This is an item that we discussed in land use, but it's a similar action that the city has taken until, actually, the Planning Commission has reached, has studied this issue a little further and come back to us with a decision. So, the motion actually is to direct the county attorney's office to draft an ordinance for board consideration to impose a moratorium upon the acceptance and/or processing of applications seeking to amend the future of Hillsborough Comprehensive Plan for Unincorporated Hillsborough County, our comp plan, to establish future land use designations other than natural preservation or otherwise established development rights on submerged lands for a period of 180 days or until the effective date of the amendments to the comprehensive plan, which clarify the lack of creation of development rights in submerged lands. Such draft ordinance will be presented to the Board of Accounting Ministers at a future board meeting for discussion to schedule the required public hearings, and that's my motion.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Merman. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Higginbotham. I do have one question of staff. This just applies to coastal submerged lands that wouldn't impact ponds and lakes and things like that, correct?
That is my understanding, Commissioner.
That's correct.
Very good.
Absolutely.
All right, seeing no further discussion, please record your votes.
Motion carried, five to zero.
10:45 time certain B5.
Heidi Penner, Director of County Audit. I have one audit report to present. This was audit report number 353, an audit of the library books and materials procurement. This audit had a two-part objective, the first being the actual procurement... This audit had a two-part objective, the first being the actual purchasing practices in place and whether the controls were appropriate for those purchasing methods. And in that regard, we did some sample testing of the actual transactions. We had a single recommendation for management related to the approval process, which they have concurred with and are implementing corrective actions for. The second piece of our objective looked at the actual procurement exemption itself for the books and materials procurement in library services, and we were able to confirm that this remains a prevailing practice to offer a procurement exemption for these purchases. I'm available for any questions that you have, and ask that you accept the report into the record.
Okay. Thank you very much for your presentation. We have motion to accept your report from Commissioner Miller, seconded by Commissioner Kemp on item B5. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, please record your vote.
Motion carried, six to zero.
Thank you.
Thanks, Heidi. Your last time certain is F4. That's Commissioner Hagan's item.
Thank you. And I'll be brief. The Bad Boy Mowers Gasparilla Bowl has moved from St. Pete to Raymond James Stadium, and will be played on December 20th of this year. Candidly, it has not been overly successful in St. Pete. However, by playing at Raymond James, this provides a real opportunity to elevate this, this bowl. The board organizers have put together a new committee. It's chaired by WWE superstar Titus O'Neal with the goal to not only fundraise and to highlight Tampa Bay, but also to help the underprivileged. Just have a quick, I think it's a one-minute video I want to show here. the folks that are involved with it. When we have events of this, of this magnitude, we normally talk about the economic impact and the exposure our community receives from the bowl games and national championship games. However, what is frequently overlooked is the social impact of these events. What impressed me with their plan and why I brought this item forward is due to their partnership with Feeding Tampa Bay and Titus O'Neal. As part of the bowl game with Feeding Tampa Bay, they have what's called a backpack program, and they're going to provide 100,000 meals to underprivileged children that they can, that they can have over the weekends. You know, during the school day, they're able to get food at, at school, but oftentimes over the weekend, these children go hungry. So this will help to feed 100,000 children. And I don't know if you guys are very familiar with Titus O'Neal, but I, I knew him as Thaddeus Bullard because he played football for the Gators. But this is one incredible man, and what he does in our community for those that are less fortunate is truly, truly amazing. And he is a, and I'm not into wrestling anymore, I was as a child, but he, he's on the international platform, and to have a man of his character and, and what he provides, we are truly blessed to have Titus in our, in our community. As an example, he had an event at Raymond James Stadium, a back-to-school event, where they provided 30,000 children with eye exams, backpacks, shots that were necessary. He does a week of giving over Christmas, but as part of Titus' involvement, they're going to bring 10,000 children to the game and provide each one of them with a, with a Christmas, Christmas toy. So when I heard about both of these, I said, you know, we have to get involved. I think it's in our best interest. The exposure will be, will be unbelievable, but for me, primarily because of the social impact. So today, the, the motion is simply to have the administrator bring back during our budget public hearing, a recommendation on funding. I'm thinking about 25,000, but just the amount and then the proper funding source. But we'll have that, discuss that at the, at our budget public hearing.
Yes, we have motion by Commissioner Hagan, seconded by Commissioner Miller. Commissioner Miller, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Let me thank Commissioner Hagan for, for bringing this issue up. Now, the, the Gasparilla Bowl was not doing well in St. Petersburg, but that's not the reason I'm doing this. I know Titus O'Neal very well. Titus O'Neal, you see him on TV in the WWE. He's, he's a wrestler. That's, that's face the fact. But the fact of the matter is, when he's not there, he is in the Tampa Bay community doing whatever he possibly can to help specifically children who need the most. He was on TV last night talking about the fact that he grew up so poor, and he didn't have shoes. And that's a whole different issue that I don't want to get into, but the fact of the matter is, he came up with a plan to help Metropolitan Ministries give shoes to those kids who need it the most. He just came up with an idea. That's just the way Titus is. So I support this so hardly, and I'm glad to hear that Titus is chairing the bowl committee to put this on. But he's a great guy. I mean, you ever watch WWE? Don't pay attention to that fluff that you see him doing on, on TV. He's a different kind of person. He's a well-respected, well-renowned, and he is on the international level across the world. So I just want to say that and glad to second the motion.
Okay. We have motion by Commissioner Hagan, seconded by Commissioner Miller on item F4. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, please record your vote.
Motion carried, six to zero.
That concludes our time certens. We have just a couple handful of items left on the regular agenda, beginning with B1.
Good morning. Item B1 is asking the board to award a one-year cooperative contract to the respective lowest responsible bidders, Mansfield Oil Company of Gainesville Incorporated, Palmdale Oil Company Incorporated, Petroleum Traders Corporation, for ongoing and as-needed purchases of delivery of motor fuel to facilities throughout the county at an estimated cost of $5,280,000 based on an estimated annual usage of 2.2 million gallons for the Fleet Management Department.
We have a motion and a second, Scott. Okay, to, your explanation was great, but most of us, in our briefings, we go through all these, so we appreciate your, your efforts here. So we have motion by Commissioner Higginbotham, seconded by Commissioner Miller to approve item B1. Please record your vote.
Motion carried, five to zero.
Thank you.
Thanks, Scott.
Mr. Stormer, could you please identify yourself?
Scott Stormer, Procurement Services. Thank you.
B2, Public Works.
Good morning, John Lyons. Commissioners, we're asking to increase the allowance authorization for the Bell Shoals Road Widening Project, Fishhawk Boulevard to Boyett Boulevard, Boyett Boulevard to Bloomingdale Avenue, from $200,000 to $1 million within the construction contract. The estimated construction cost of this project is about $36 million, and.
Okay. We have motion by Commissioner White. Thank you for your presentation, seconded by Commissioner Miller to approve item B2. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, please record your vote.
Motion carried, five to zero.
And B4, Strategic Planning Department.
Good morning, Commissioners. Rob Parkinson, Hillsborough County Criminal Justice Liaison. Item B4 is an agreement with the Hillsborough County Sheriff's Office to continue misdemeanor probation services in Hillsborough County. The agreement is for the period of October 1, 2018, through September 30, 2021. The Sheriff's Office has been providing misdemeanor probation services on behalf of the county since October 1, 2015. The program is self-funded through the collection of cost of supervision fees from the probationers, which are included in the recommended fiscal year '19 and fiscal year '20 budget within the countywide special revenue fund.
Thank you. You're, that was great. Item B4, we have motion by Commissioner Miller, seconded by Commissioner Kemp to approve item B4. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, please record your vote.
Motion carried, five to zero.
Thanks, Rob. You know, the last item on your agenda is board appointments, F1 for the Arts Council.
Okay, you only have one board today, and it's the Arts Council. Please choose one from each category, position one and position two. Commissioner Murman.
Number three and number five.
Commissioner White.
Three and four.
Commissioner Miller.
Three and four.
Commissioner Hagan.
Three and five.
Commissioner Kemp.
Three and five.
And Commissioner Higginbotham.
Three and four.
Okay, we have a tie.
Okay. For position one, it'll be Clarence Roberts. We have a tie for the second position with three votes each.
I'll change to five.
You'll change to five? Okay.
Is everybody else staying the same? Okay.
Move to confirm.
Thank you very much. And we have motion confirmed by Commissioner White, seconded by Commissioner Miller. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, please record your vote.
Motion carried, six to zero.
And that just leaves future issues, if any.
Okay, I know, okay, Commissioner, we got a bunch.
I thought we had more public comment.
Oh, we do have public comment.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, right.
Oh, do you, I thought we, you want to wait to do future issues?
Either way.
Okay. I was gonna go ahead and get the issues out of the way and then do public comment. So Commissioner Miller, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Back a little over a month ago, we lost a stalwart person. She really worked for the city, but she was heavily involved with what was going on in Hillsborough County. And I'm talking about Ms. Carla Lewis. Carla worked hand-in-hand with Ms. Ziegler and, and with the West Coast, I'm sorry, West Central Advisory Council, and with Ms. Copeland Miller and the Community Action Board in making life better for those within Hillsborough County, regardless of her being employed with, with the city of Tampa. She had a wavering ability to get things done. She cared about everyone she possibly came in contact with, and she just was a loss, a major loss to Hillsborough County. And I've been contacted by Ms. Copeland Miller and those with the Community Action Board asking me to bring forth to this body to have the small conference room at the Lee Davis Center, named after Ms. Carla Lewis. So I'm going to ask staff to come back with every process that is necessary that we name that small conference room in the Lee Davis Center after Ms. Carla Lewis, and if we can have that placed on the agenda for our September 20th meeting. I think it doesn't take that much time to get that done, so if we can do that, I would appreciate it. That's my request.
That was very appropriate. She was an unbelievable community leader, I think, for everything she did in the city. Okay, Commissioner White, you're recognized.
Thank you very much. With regards to the school board referendum, the action taken by our board earlier today simply complied with a state law mandating the ministerial task of placing on the November 6, 2018 general election ballot, the referendum approved by the school board. I also understand that if the measure is not approved by a majority of the voters at the November election, the school board intends to bring the matter back to the voters on March 5, 2019. Since municipal elections are the only matters currently scheduled for March of 2019, I question whether it's appropriate to schedule an issue of countywide significance, like the sales surtax proposed by the school board for the March election. I'm not sure at this point in time where I stand on the March backup date, but I do want to be sure that the residents of unincorporated Hillsborough County are treated fairly. I understand that there's at least some guidance from an Attorney General opinion on this subject. Is that right, Ms. Beck?
Yes, there's a 1998 Attorney General opinion that talks about some ability to work with the school board on the date. It's an advisory opinion, but it does provide some guidance.
Okay. Given that fact, I'd like to ask our staff to reach out to the administrator, administrative staff of the school district to work together to determine an appropriate election date for consideration of the school surtax if the voters do not approve it in November of this year and the school board still intends to ask for a second referendum.
I, my item is pretty simple. I was asked by a fellow commissioner to approve a board membership, and there is not a board policy as such right now for the chairman to approve. We can approve travel and different things, but there's no policy on memberships because as we know from efforts by Commissioner Miller on our communication policy, what one does is good for all of us, et cetera, et cetera. So I'd like for the county attorney to bring back a board policy on, on the paying for board member, memberships to an organization, and that that board member, membership would be available to all board members in the county name.
Okay, we will do that.
Okay.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
When you say membership, memberships to like what?
This one, well, I, I was from Commissioner Kemp for ULI, the Urban Land Institute. I'm talking, I'm not.
As long as, as long as you're talking, as long as it's dealing with our responsibility and our work that we do.
Yes. That's why I wanted it to be in the county name so it would be under, you know, county business, that we wouldn't just apply like to Rough Riders or something like that, you know?
It'd be a public purpose, yeah.
Yes, or club memberships, that these be something related to our business. Commissioner Miller, are you done? Okay. And I think that's it for future issues, and now we'll pick up where we left off on the public comment. We're on the off-the-agenda speakers, Valerie Arthur, Venu Gilbert Goldberg, and Ron Goldberg are the next three speakers.
No, this is fine.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you for allowing, allowing me to speak today.
And you're Valerie, right?
I'm Valerie Arthur, yes. I live at 613 Timber Pond Drive, and we are affected severely by the flooding, and we are in a crisis situation. We have water coming in, in our backyard, as well as flooding in the streets. It's difficult to get my, my car through, through the road, and we have been getting nowhere, asking for assistance on this, and this has been going on for three years. But the water does not recede. The water comes up in our yard, and it stays there. And there's, there is pumping being done, but it's very minimal, and we're told that it's in a half an inch a day, and if it doesn't rain for 30 days, it will go down. But there's been consistent rain, and it keeps building up, and I, I consider it like a bathtub, where you don't let the plug out. So now our, our street is underwater for over a week. We have all the television, television stations coming. We call the county engineer, we ask for help, and he says there's nothing that can be done, that there's litigation by property owners and outside of our community and developers, that they will not allow pumping. And we, this is the new normal, and that we need to just get used to it. So our homes are at risk. If there's a hurricane or a tropical storm that comes in, our house will be flooded. It's just a matter of time, and, but nobody cares. And something needs to be done, and I'm pleading for this, and that's why we're getting so much attention in our neighborhood, and it cannot wait till March. And I invite all the county commissioners in our district to come over and take a look, to see for yourselves what we are going through. And I, I'm not myself. I cannot relax. Every time it rains, I am worried. We have neighbors where their backyards are underwater. You could see some of those. We have big holes in the ground. It's like a war zone. This is my, that, that is my street right there, and that's what it looks like right now. That's my backyard. And there's all this vegetation in the pond. We never had that before. And there's all this vegetation in the pond, we never had that before. I mean, our property values are going down. That's the, that's the park, Davis Park, that picture right there. This poor man, look at his backyard, it's practically in his home. So it cannot wait till March. Something needs to be done. I don't know all the complexities of why this is happening, but something was engineered incorrectly and this problem is not going away. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And I'd like to have John Lyons come forward. And this is under his purview, so if you'd like to just address this and maybe answer some questions board members may have.
Yes, ma'am. This, the Mead Lake and the Timber Pond area is in North Brandon, just up near Brandon High School. And the area drains naturally north to, I think it's Mango Lake, which eventually pops off and goes to the bypass canal. The challenge we have right now is under the SWIFTMUD permitting is that we can only pump in an emergency situation when the water levels rise to what we're seeing there. And we're limited by the amount of discharge we can push downstream without flooding others downstream. We do have a longer-term project, which is part of that permitting piece, will be that we'll be able to pump sooner and be able to draw the lake down, say, early summer before the rains start to hopefully create some capacity and then be more systematic in how we discharge water from that area.
Unfortunately, it's raining like really bad right now.
Yes, the last three years have been just abysmal for us.
What can we do to help them? What can we do? Can we call SWIFTMUD? Can, I mean, I can write a letter?
Still, it's a restriction of how much water we can push downstream right now because if you think about it, it's not only raining there, it's our ponds downstream are at capacity as well. So the ultimate solution to, to help mitigate the situation is to be able to do that ahead of time and draw the lake, Mead Lake, down some to create some capacity in there for when it does rain and try to balance those efforts.
Can you do a little bit now to help relieve?
We are pumping now, yes.
To, does that, is that relieving, like, some of the pressure in the pictures?
It gives relief, it gives relief when it stops raining, but we continually get these intense rainstorms out in that area. I think we've had, I looked at some of our maps and we've had pretty excessive rain, like eight or 10 inches in the last 30 days.
The project is in permitting?
The project's being designed for the permanent pump station, yes.
Okay, so you do, it is in the process of being permitted?
Yes.
Okay.
And we'll move it along as quickly as we can, obviously, it's, it's an issue.
Is there anything else you could do right now?
We don't believe so right now. The temporary pumping is about what we're limited to at this point, without creating problems downstream.
Geez, that's, that's, Commissioner Hagan, I know this is in your future district and has been in your old district, so you're recognized.
No, I just want the citizens to know, and I believe my aide spoke with several of you a little while ago, but I'll get with the county administrator and with John Lyons and see if there's anything that we can do to expedite the project before, before March. And I don't know if there is, but we're certainly gonna explore and do whatever we can that's under our purview.
No, we can't, sir.
That's what we're saying, same words, seven years ago.
Sir, we cannot, we cannot allow outbursts from the audience.
Seven years.
Okay, next speaker is, oh, yes, Commissioner Kemp, you're recognized.
Mr. Merrill, you had alluded earlier, I know, about the permitting and everything, but you had said if we could speed up the financing for the, you know, for whatever they're doing from March. And I'm just wondering if that's available and if that would make this happen any sooner.
I don't know that, that's the issue. The issue is whether we can speed up the design process. What I was talking about is with the additional funding for stormwater that you all approved, we can begin to do more projects more quickly. But this one, I think the issue is can we move it through the design permitting construction process faster? Because it's already funded, so.
So, okay. So it's, we're, okay, let me just say this, that these residents, because I spoke to them before the meeting started today and they said that we told them this very same thing two years ago and that nothing got done. So I guess I just wanna make sure, this is gonna get done now for sure, right? Can you come to, I think they would appreciate the certainty of knowing, you know, because they have come here before and they just wanna hear from you.
Absolutely, this is a priority. We're working diligently to get it done and we'll keep the board, as well as the residents, updated on the progress of things as they move along.
Okay, that was the next thing I was gonna ask you. If someone could be a contact from the residents, that they could talk to an email with you on an ongoing basis.
Absolutely.
I think that there's, evidently the gentleman's back there and you guys should talk before he leaves. Commissioner Miller, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Lyons, let me ask a question. I understand that we gotta go through the design process and all those good things and we're gonna try to get that done as soon as possible. But right now, today, they are flooding and I understand SWIFTMUD only allows us to pump so much water out to go back down into other areas of the county. But is there, is there a way that we can talk to SWIFTMUD and gently, hopefully, some kind of way, get the permission to pump a little bit more? Because it rained today, they're back in the same posture.
Yes.
Even though we're talking about speeding up the process to get it designed, that's not helping them right now.
Yes, I understand that, Commissioner. The, the challenge we have is that if we, based on our agreement with SWIFTMUD and what SWIFTMUD's opinion is on the discharge rate, if we do anything more than that, it's gonna create similar problems downstream.
In another neighborhood.
And what I would do is I'm gonna go back to our staff and, you know, float a few thoughts by them to see if there's something else we can do, perhaps downstream, to create some capacity and maybe kinda daisy chain it, and we'll see what we can do there.
Can that be done today?
We'll talk with them about it today, absolutely.
Did you, because I know when we had this problem up in northwest Hillsborough County, we pumped, we had the same problem.
Yes.
You know, the lake levels and all that. And if we pumped too much, it would spread to another neighborhood, so. But I thought you did something there, you pumped it somewhere else or you, you had an alternative source to pump the water into.
We, I'd have to go back and refresh my memory on what we did up there exactly. The, but that is the challenge, is that because of the rains being so intense in that part of the county, in the northeast part of the county this year, as opposed to, you know, several years ago, it was 60 inches of rain in the northwest and 30 inches of rain in the other parts of the county. We're kinda seeing the reversal of that situation and it's consumed all the capacity within the drainage network. But we'll, we'll take a look at it. We need to understand, I need to understand it a little bit better from a technical standpoint and I'll talk with our staff and definitely keep on it.
So, let me just ask you, Commissioner Miller, because I said earlier, if I need, why, I mean, if I need to send a letter to Brian and his staff at SWIFTMUD, I think maybe we should take action here at this board to allow us to do that?
I think that we're working very well with the SWIFTMUD staff on doing that. So we're, we're trying to exhaust all that and get it taken care of.
Okay.
But we'll, we'll look at some other potential things we might be able to do.
See what you can do to help.
Sure.
Because it's, it's pretty bad.
I've been there and I understand what the situation is.
Right, yeah, fishing in your own front yard. Okay, Commissioner White, you're recognized.
Thank you. Mr. Merrill and I actually had a lengthy discussion about stormwater policy yesterday during our briefing. It's my understanding that we have a, well, I could be wrong. Let me ask, let me just ask, do we have a stormwater technical manual?
We do.
We do. Okay, so I'm gonna ask Ms. Beck, is that the board's manual or is that administration's manual? Who owns that document?
I would think that's more administration.
It is.
Okay. It, it seems to me, common sense tells me that we potentially have some issues here. So as I hear this issue today, it seems that we're lacking capacity in an entire system or at least in an entire portion of a system. And I look at things like new subdivisions, new developments coming in and they're bringing in truckloads and truckloads and truckloads of fill and they're building these things up. I'm not an engineer, don't claim to be, but my common sense, my gut tells me that that's gonna lead to some potentially flooding issues in areas where you haven't traditionally had them. I know we have stormwater engineers that are, through the engineering process, diverting water to places where it hasn't traditionally gone as a result of new development. So I just, that leads me to a litany of questions like, you know, should we allow developments to build up so much? Should we require them to build at grade? You know, and if that's the case, then should they only be able to build in the high areas? Again, diverting the water. It just seems to me that, that, that we could somehow address this through policy. You know, I was gonna ask for a workshop, but if the stormwater technical manual, staff's manual, I don't know that a workshop would, would, would do all that much good. But I'd like to just ask staff for their advice on how we begin to peel the layers of this onion back and begin to address some things that could potentially be broken with regards to stormwater policy.
Yeah, part of that is determining what's required under Building Code, state statute. I'm, so, I'm obviously not an engineer. My guess is that builders would not be bringing in fill unless they had to because that just adds to the cost. So there, we'll look at whether there, there are probably code requirements that are driving that. Now, the question is can the code be changed? Is it driven by state building codes? But fill's expensive and so it just isn't brought in sort of without some reason, but...
So, so then my rebuttal to that would be if they have to bring in so much fill to develop a site, I mean, that's obviously not a prime site. And that's not our fault as local government. So maybe we should require a more robust stormwater system in a, in a scenario like that. That's gonna eat into their densities, I know they're not gonna like that. But the bottom line is, I've dealt with constituent case after constituent case with people that have lived in a site for 40, 50, 60 years. And suddenly, because of what's going on around them, water that was traditionally not being diverted their way is now being diverted their way and they're flooding out, and frankly, it's just not fair. I mean, they, you know, they were there first, they've been there 50, 60 years. They had a site that they were able to, to build on and not have flooding issues. So something's gotta be done, whether it's on the development services front, whether it's making tweaks to the stormwater technical manual. I'm not gonna ask for a workshop at this time, it won't do any good, it's not the board's manual, but I, I would really ask that staff take a hard look at stormwater issues. I mean, it's a recurring, I, I can't speak for the other six offices, but in my office, it's a recurring theme every summer. We know we're gonna be inundated with stormwater constituent services.
Well, I think at some point we will have to bring, whether it's in a workshop, something back to the board. One of the, the major steps that you all took was when we increased the stormwater assessment. And that is helped to fund a lot of needs.
Okay, but I gotta take the people in the queue. Commissioner Kemp?
Thank you.
We are in public comment and so I kinda wanna keep things moving because we have probably about 15 more speakers.
Mm-hmm. Oh, I, I think it's not in the board's manual, but it is the board's public policy. And I think we should be looking at what other communities are doing. I was just down in Apollo Beach last week noticing how one property was built with this steep driveway, six or seven feet up above their neighbors. And so it is, there are some people that will do that. They'll put, they'll, it, put the fill in to do that. And I do think it happens repeatedly, over and over again. It is something long-term, not only the stormwater, but also the issues of building and construction. And I would think that there must be someplace that we can look at in terms of this and...
Well, staff will take a look at it.
Have a model.
Yep. Okay, next speaker, Venu Goldberg and Ron Goldberg.
Yes, so my name is Venu Goldberg and I have lived in Timber Pond for eight years. We have five children, all of them have attended Brandon High School and are in the JRTC program. Our children walk to school, I try to meet a new neighbor every time I walk. And during this, the coverage in the media, we, I, I met a neighbor that I had never met, Colonel Potter. He wrote a letter, he is undergoing chemotherapy today, he's starting today, and so he wasn't able to attend. But he, he, in his letter cites some history behind what has happened and failed attempts. And I, I could read this letter, I guess, just to give you guys some history, if you want me to. It says, "I'm sorry I could not attend this meeting, I have very pressing matters at Moffett Cancer Society Center. Timber Pond Lake Mead has always been subject to some degree of flooding, but not to the long-term, long-lasting flooding it's now experiencing. The entire long-term flooding problem at Timber Pond Lake Mead can be traced back to the poor flood control engineering at Larson Pond, east of Parsons Avenue from Timber Pond about five years ago. The area around Larson Pond, a sinkhole, was subject to severe flooding just as we have at Timber Pond now. I looked at Larson Pond two days ago, even with the heavy recent rains, there is zero flooding problem there. When the county engineers first contracted the Larson Pond flood mitigation feasibility study, the contracting company recommended that a large area where dwellings and businesses are located on or near Parsons Ave be evacuated and a large retention pond dug to shore the Larson overflow. Apparently, the county engineers determined that that was not financially feasible, so they devised a scheme to move the water through Timber Pond to Lake June and beyond. That plan was stopped by legal action. So now we're confronted with a very successful flood mitigation project at Larson Pond. Unfortunately, the excess water from Larson Pond is now being stored in Timber Pond Lake Mead and is flooding our streets, yards, outbuildings, and perhaps in the no distant future, our homes. The woefully inadequate Brown Pond was constructed to retain the overflow from Larson Pond. Brown Pond also receives runoff from Crabtree Pond and from Jersey Pond. There is a sometime pump and an eight-inch pump pipe installed to move the water out of Brown Pond and up to Wind Horse Road and beyond. Brown Pond is constructed so that once the water in it gets low enough, Timber Pond Lake Mead will pass through a floodgate into Brown Pond and subsequently, Timber Pond will then be dumped down, pumped down. Unfortunately, due to some inadequate engineering and some serious miscalculations during rainy season, Brown Pond gets far too much water from Larson Pond to hold it, even when the pump is running."
Thank you.
So anyway, he continues, "I just am beseeching you, can't wait till March."
Thank you. Ron Goldberg?
Hello, I'm Ron Goldberg, thank you for allowing us all of you to come. And just wanna urge you and ask to just keep communicating from one department to the next. Obviously, there's multiple departments, agencies involved in this. You've seen a few pictures, you've heard the stories, other neighbors, it's their homes that have the water. Mine fortunately doesn't, but my children have to walk through that street to get to school and it looks like the water could eventually get on that sidewalk. I know the other night, just being there, as you saw in one picture, when the cars do drive by the driveways, the water goes up and so then our children, as they're walking to school, potentially would have to walk through that, it's the only way to get to the school. And so just ask that you just keep on top of all the different agencies and ask them to do something because September should be a time when potentially there's more rain than there was in August, which adds, just says the likelihood is that this will get worse and not better in the coming weeks. And so just ask you to continue this and I thank you.
We will, we're gonna stay on it, thank you very much. Karen Mangé, Michael Cossarda. Is Karen here? Okay, is Michael Cossarda here? Okay.
Hi, thanks. Appreciate the conversation happening before I came up here. My name is Mike Cossarda, I live at 631 Timber Pond. I've lived there since 93, so I've got 25 years of going through this. This is the third time I've seen my street flooded since I've been there. First time in 97, I had three massive oaks in my front yard that died overnight. One of them leaning over the house, cost me $2,000 to have them removed. You know, that's just, that, it happens. The replacement tree I planted now is actually taller than my two-story. I'd hate to see that one go. I'd hate to see that one go. A few years, the second example, I mean, the counties responded. They, the second time, let's see, the first time they called it El Nino, the second time it was like the hundred-year flood. You put a, like a mile of pipe to pump stuff from here down the streets, incondescending everybody to lower the weight, the levels. It was extraordinary. Several pumps, they had to chain them together in order to push the water down. In 2015, you came to us and gave us a good plan. You said you were going to link the various lakes and ponds, you know, from Martin's Pond to Lake June to Wee Lake, to Mead Lake, and therefore you'd be able to pump them down and be able to fill it up as, as we were upstream of them. Made sense. To my knowledge, they told us that was a million-dollar project that was there. We've seen some of that go in, but I don't see that effect. We've heard that there's possibly legal action that kept something going into Lake June that may have stopped that. But you talk about money and that was a million dollars, I was told, that was going into some of these improvements in order to it and here we are again with water in our streets. Just throw some numbers. I have an electronic rain gauge because I watch this stuff. We've had fifty-nine inches of rain at my house this year so far. Thirteen and a half, fourteen inches last month, thirteen and a half the month before. We normally should get about fifty-four, so for the year, we're already above. It's just a wet year. I think everybody knows that, but numbers sometimes gives your appreciation. I've had an inch and a half already this month in addition to that. So my main point was to ask about, you know, hey, you, if we talk about the money that we need to do to different things, it's, we've got a lot, you've alr, you've already invested an awful lot in what we're going, but I heard, communicate with us. Let us know what's stopping. The plan sounded sound when you gave it to us. You've invested the money. It, it, we don't see it in place and working. The other part is, you know, we've, we're starting to see some of the, some of the secondary effects like the sewage. We have that one sinkhole, you saw the picture. I think that's tied to the sewer lines there were, that they're working, but you know, that's just, that's just another one of the fallouts, the things that we worry about and have to live with in the neighborhood. So thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, Gerard Baer and then Jimmy Hickman. Is Gerard here? Yes.
I did send some documents and, or showing up there in your database. They should have these already sent in.
Would you like to speak from the Elmo? We have a microphone over there.
Well, I sent the document showing the drainage plan. Just go ahead. The county had a drainage plan as it shows on there where they were going to drain from one lake to another lake to another lake.
Commissioner White, hold on one second. Commissioner White?
Sir, I think what the chairwoman was saying is we have a microphone over there if you want to speak from there. Yeah, that's, it might make it easier to...
Can you bring those up on the screen? Okay, this shows the plan that the county had to move the... Water from one lake to the other. Lake Mead traditionally was a environmentally protected lake. It should not have had water dumped into it. When the development was put in thirty-two years ago, which I've been in there for thirty-two years, the lake was not allowed to have street water dumped into it because it was environmentally protected. When the development went in, they added retention ponds on both sides of the lake to keep street water from going into the lake. There were berms along the sides of the lake to keep the retention ponds from dumping into the lake. Since then, all this water has risen way far above the berms. There's grass covering the lake from all the fertilizer runoff running into the lake. So in addition to the flooding of the streets and the places around the lake, we're also having all this grass growing in the lake. It's basically strangling it. I don't know if you can see the pictures I've got. Sorry, let me... This is what the lake looked at, looked like several years ago, about five years ago. You can see that's from my back porch. That's what it looks like currently, looking past the same tree. That's from my backyard, looking off to the side and there's the same tree off to the side. You can see the, the lake is just covered with grass because of all the furniture or fertilizer runoff going into it. It's polluting the lake, causing this massive grass bloom. So we're not only getting water, but we're getting all these pollutants going into the lake, which is not good for an environmentally protected lake. When I first moved there, they told me that we were not allowed to use gasoline outboard motors or anything like that because, you know, only electric motors because it was environmentally protected, which is nice. Unfortunately, it's not so nice now because it's covered in grass. And then, of course, the water is coming up into our backyards, up into our neighbors' front yards, blocking the streets. Just want to see what they can do. The, the plan was to divert the water away and my time's up, but thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Jimmy Hickman, then Al Suarez. Good afternoon.
Hi, yes, my name is Jimmy Hickman. I've been a resident in Timber Pond for thirty-two years now and this has probably been just about the worst time for the flooding that we've experienced and we, we really need something to happen quickly. We really do because I think the, you know, the current situation's definitely only going to get worse given the time of the year that we're in. A lady earlier started reading a letter from Luther Potter. He's a retired Colonel, U.S. Army. I wanted to finish reading his letter because his letter is very good and had a lot of good information in it. "I have several times witnessed Brown Pond spilling thousands of gallons into Timber Pond while the pump was in operation. The county water management engineers have managed to move the flooding and storage of excess water from a sinkhole on Parsons Avenue from into the yards, streets, and homes of the people living in Timber Pond. Another major water storage area the engineers are using besides our homes, front yards, is Davis Park, a delightful little neighborhood county park where as much as eighteen years ago, I taught my three grandchildren how to play soccer. I have not been able to teach my youngest grandchildren there because county water management has been using it to store excess water from Larson Pond for years and it is constantly either flooded or over, or an overgrown mud hole. Finally, those of us who live along the Timber Pond can easily see the flooding problems coming to a head when rainy season gathers steam. Calls to the county asking for some preemptive pumping have gotten the response to at least two residents. Swift Mud will not let us pump. I was told the pumps could not be started until the water was in the streets. Subsequent calls to Swift Mud have gotten the reply that it is up to the county to determine when they want to pump. I'm absolutely confident that one of them is correct. I am giving to understand that some flood mitigation projects for Timber Pond Lake Mead are slated in the out-years. I'm seventy-six years of age. Please forgive me if I do not look into the out-years. To help me solve my immediate flood, flooding problems that was created by poor planning at Larson Pond during the in-years, engineering studies and stats have, are available to substantiate the above statement, should anyone care to see them. It is just a shame that the residents of Timber Pond were allowed to be placed in this position and it would be a greater shame if our county officials allowed it to continue." And he thanks for any assistance.
Thank you. Well, I can safely say we're not going to allow it to continue. It's just the timing, the process has to continue in its own time to also. Next speaker is Al Suarez and then Gerard Coronado.
Had a look at my watch. Good afternoon. Folks, my name is Al Suarez. I'm a retired, a former police officer, retired Department of Homeland Security Special Agent and a military, retired military warrant officer. I've lived in Timber Pond for over thirty years and I've experienced everything that everybody's that's spoken here. It's true and correct and, and the problem is ongoing. It's the severe problems that we've been having there, like Brian Rodriguez said, that we get a lot of saying, and I'm going to say the old term, lip, that the same thing that we had two years ago, I came to the same meeting and they said the same thing, it's going to be addressed, but it hasn't. During the rainy season, there's, and it, there's a problem during mostly in the rainy season. It starts a little bit and now, it started about a month ago and now it's, it flooded the streets there and there's, it brings not only the sinkhole that, that developed, we don't even know the potential other structure in the roads that are happening, but the other problems, the safety hazards, the, but, the mosquitoes problem that it'll bring and that has brought, a lot of people have been experiencing it. It's things that we've been experiencing. We are citizens and residents of the county. The sinkhole problem there developed, I would say, I'm not an engineer, but that's very serious and, and like I said, we don't even know what else, what, the structures of those roads and what other potential safety hazards are there. Channel eight was called in there because of the, the recurring problem and, and they videoed and you saw the, the photos of the flooded streets. Something has to be done. The poor substandard planning, engineering and, and also maybe the, the financial and the legal issues involved here are contributing to this problem and ongoing problem and this needs to be resolved. Like you were saying, a serious study in the, of the systems and the, the transferring of the, the pumps, in the different pumps, it has to be addressed and corrected and, and I, I expect this as a, a citizen of this county. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, Gerard Coronado and then Barbara Rutten.
Good afternoon. I live at 607 Timber Pond. I've been there for sixteen years. I'm not going to beat a dead horse. I think you've heard our concerns. I think the secondary concern that I have now is that people do not want to go through the standing water, so now they are driving through our yards. To add insult to injury, yesterday morning I was walking the dog and I noticed an individual in his truck, I don't know if it's county, I'm not going to say, it was a personal truck. They were getting out, they pulled the manhole out, they're looking at the hole, making some discussions and then I went back in, went back out about fifteen minutes later to go to work and I noticed that somebody had driven through the neighbor's yard. Thinking, well, what person would be so disrespectful to drive through somebody's yard? Well, I have security cameras, so I pulled the security cameras and lo and behold, the individual who was at that manhole decided that instead of going around the neighborhood, they decided to go through the neighbor's yard. I think because what's happening now, I think we are very frustrated, we are feeling disrespected and to have an individual to callously drive through our yards now, it's, it's insult to injury. But I think, I want to say, don't fail us. Don't fail us this time. I mean, two years ago, we were promising things that were taking place, we wouldn't be where we're at today had those promises been made. And so right now, I implore you, do not drop the ball again, please. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Barbara Rutten and then David Drew.
Hi, I'm Barbara Routen. I live at 629 Timber Pond Drive. First of all, thank you so much for letting us air our concerns. Before my family moved to Timber Pond in nineteen eighty-six, we did our due diligence about buying a lakefront home that was at the time not in a flood zone. We weren't required to have insurance. We discovered that Lake Mead was a dynamic lake with a gravity outfall. Water from neighbors higher elevations entered Lake Mead via storm drains and culverts and then the water flowed downstream through this gravity outfall. We also learned that along the lake shore, there was a retention ditch separating our yards from Lake Mead by berm or dike, as you heard earlier. But eleven years, for eleven years, we had no trouble with flooding, but in the nineteen ninety-seven, ninety-eight El Nino years, we had our first episode of flooding. We were told at that time that the county had capped off Lake Mead's natural outfall to allow development downstream from us and wondered if it's right to approve new construction that endangers existing neighborhoods, as Commissioner White mentioned earlier. We're grateful that the county brought in temporary pumps to divert the water. That helped a lot and gave us a sense of security. As time went on, as you can see in the pictures, from nineteen eighty-seven to two thousand seventeen, the vegetation has overgrown the retention areas behind our house. And the county dug it out once with a backhoe excavator. I thank you for that too, but maybe it's time to do that again. In two thousand nine, county did weed control maintenance in the retention ditch and ran into a gator that was captured by Julie Harder. We thank you for that maintenance too, but no maintenance has been done in the nine years since that time. So what I'm thinking is that we need you to mitigate the flooding problem as soon as possible and maybe by implementing measures that will keep the lake at a safe level year-round, perhaps by providing ongoing yearly inspections and maintenance such as digging out our retention ditches and clearing out the storm drains and also by not issuing additional building permits downstream that will exacerbate the problem.
Thank you very much. Thank you for coming. David Drew?
Hello, my name is David Drew. I'm a resident of four oh six Maydell Drive. Currently, the bridge that's, is shut down for non-structural use. You, y'all shut the bridge down December two thousand and fifteen. Since then, you, you detoured traffic from forty-one over to Maydell, which I believe that was part of the factor that hindered the bridge structurally. Since you've closed it down in December fifteen, all the traffic has been going down forty-one and seventy-eighth street and I'm here among the residencies of Maydell and I'd like y'all to really consider reopening that bridge. I looked at the budget that y'all have for that. I think it's a little over six million dollars. The residents in that area does not, we do not want that bridge to be opened back up. The corridor where the traffic is running now is seventy-eighth and forty-one. That's a four-lane road on both sides. It's, it has handled the traffic and it will continue to handle the traffic. There's no more open land to develop in Clarimelle or Progress Village, so there's no more growth going in that area because I just think it'd be really wise to consider rebudgeting that six million dollars for that bridge. That's all I like to say.
Okay, I think John Lyons is sitting there and he'd be happy to talk to you about it.
Okay.
David McAllister? I think David left. Brittany Rochelle? And then our last speaker is Beth Vinauman.
Hi, good afternoon. My name is Brittany Rochelle. Some of you may know my father, Al Rochelle, with Benus nine. I just want to thank you for hearing us today. I want to speak from, from my mother's heart. I'm the mom of two young children. I have a four and a five-year-old. They love going outside in our backyard and they love seeing the wildlife. They love playing on their playset and we've had turtles lay eggs in our backyard before. My kids have seen that two times now, which is incredible. Unfortunately, because of all of this water, we now only have fifteen feet of backyard left before the waters of my daughter's bedroom. We don't have wildlife anymore. We've run out of space. Their playset is underwater. They can't go outside and enjoy their freedoms and that's hard. That's hard for a four and a five-year-old to understand. We've heard conflicting stories about sewage being in the road. That is a health hazard. People drive by, splash that water in our yards. My kids are walking in our driveway and I don't want that water in my house. There is action that can be taken place. There is vegetation that is overgrown, that lake, that has forced that water into our roadways. If we can remove that vegetation, the sun can do its glorious thing and help evaporate some of that water. That is something that we can do immediately. This is a crisis situation. We have people that have water encroaching that if it hasn't already encroached fully into their backyards, we're a little higher up than some of the other ones. Our house is only three feet higher in elevation than Davis Park. Davis Park is closed. It is fully underwater, so we only have less than three feet before we are underwater. This is crisis. You have a neighborhood that is losing property value. You have a neighborhood that is losing their time and their space. We can pump... We can pump as much as we want. We can remove soil as much as we want, but it is action that we are coming to you asking for help and relief. So thank you again for your time and for taking action on our behalf. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And Beth Veeneman is our last speaker today. Good afternoon. Thank you for waiting and being patient.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. And we've heard some very important issues today, and I have one that I argue is even more important than what we've heard today. I am Beth Veeneman, a member of HOPE, the Hillsborough Organization for Progress and Equality. As commissioners and county administrator, you understand that we have an intolerable shortage of affordable housing in our county. And we truly appreciate that you are moving in the right direction by recommending $3 million of county funds and the 2019 budget for affordable housing. We understand that due to increases in property values, there are dollars that are not as yet allocated in the 2019 budget. And since housing is a basic need for families, we ask you to allocate an additional $3 million towards affordable housing. We have an affordable housing crisis, a crisis so big that your own staff has said that the entire budget couldn't fix it. So the wisest use of this additional revenue from increased property values is to build or rehab housing that's affordable for working families and seniors with low incomes. We've heard story after story of hard-working families struggling to afford decent housing, and the data bears this out as well. The Schimberg Center for Housing Study found a huge shortage of affordable, available units. For every 100 renter households with incomes below 50% of median income, only 78 units are available and affordable. And for those with incomes below 30% of AMI, it's much worse. Only 27 units for every 100 families. So $6 million for affordable housing in the county budget for 2019 could be used to leverage another $50 million. Research across the country shows that on average, every $1 of county funding can leverage another $50 in public and private funds for the development of affordable housing. Construction and rehab of affordable housing will also bring economic development through more jobs, increased business, and additional tax revenue. So we appreciate your commitment to dedicate county funds to affordable housing, and we implore you to please increase the funding in the 2019 budget to commit at least $6 million for the development of decent housing that's affordable for working families and seniors with low income. Thank you.
Thank you. And that concludes our public comment. Commissioner White, you're recognized.
Thank you. Mr. Merrill, I'm not going to beat a dead horse on this flooding issue. I know you and Commissioner Hagan have that handled. My final ask, though, in the meantime, would be that you make this neighborhood a top priority for a visit by a mosquito crew?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Merrill, are we concluded for our business?
No other speakers? Yes, I believe we are.
No other business? We are adjourned.